I bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? None. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Ms. Serza, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here. Item 3.2, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? None. Ms. Serza?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. This evening, my report begins with a welcome back to more elementary students who returned to classrooms this week. There are smiling faces behind those masks as students in pre-K through third grade began onsite learning at Clara Bird Baker and Laurel Lane Elementary School. You will recall that our quality issues at the school led to their return. The other elementary schools welcomed back pre-K through three students on October 26th. Students you see without their masks are enjoying their lunch, which is served in classrooms each day to reduce the number of people students interact with throughout the day. Students are doing a great job wearing a mask and covering their face. Staff is working diligently to implement other mitigation strategies such as social distancing, hand washing, cleaning of classrooms for safety, and assessing for wellness before students and staff come to school. We will continue to focus on those health and safety measures as fourth and fifth grade students return to in-person learning next Monday at all nine elementary schools. We are watching the health data, and as of right now, we feel comfortable bringing the additional elementary school students back. If the numbers change, we will reevaluate the situation. These are all the announcements for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Do my colleagues have any updates or announcements? Ms. Young?
Yes, the SAT committee met on October 28th virtually, and we had an interesting group of students that came forward, a lot of freshmen this year, which is encouraging. And probably our main topic of discussion, and Mr. Dowell can correct me if I'm wrong, was about virtual learning and some of the issues that are related to it with student participation, and Dr. Worley responded with some ideas that they might want to take a look at so that students can be worked with in a better way, so.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Did you have additional?
I would really not have anything to add to that, except, yeah, I was really encouraged by the enthusiasm of our student advisory committee. Like was mentioned, a lot of freshmen, first-time participants, even those that weren't freshmen, first-time participants, and really just engaged to be spokespeople for their peers. And so, we had a lot of good conversation about how to communicate with their peers and channel some of the strengths and weaknesses of this virtual environment and how we can be partners in that. So, yeah, it was a great conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Ms. Young?
I just always love those kids. It's so much fun to work with them because of their enthusiasm and all the things. You can just see the anticipation of things going on in their lives. I really enjoy that, so.
Thank you. Were there additional announcements? Okay. So, we're now moving on to citizens' comments. We have an opportunity for our citizens to call in, and I believe we have two comments tonight. And that concludes our citizens' comments. Moving on to item 6.1, the FY 10-year enrollment projections. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we are having a presentation via Zoom from Future Think. Ms. Tracy Healy, the president of Future Think, will be presenting the information this evening. It'll just take a couple of moments to get us set up and start it.
It's my pleasure to be here to talk about the crazy times. I'll share my screen so we can look at the four points. My name is Tracy Healy. I am the president. I'm located in Dublin, Ohio. Been in operation at Future Think for years. We've been doing this for, I actually have a room in James City for twenty years. But happy. There are several data sets that we use in projecting enrollment. One of the most important being what's happened historically in the district. As we're looking over the 10-year period of time, we've seen increases in enrollment peaking in 2017, 18 school year, with some slight declines in 18 and 2019. And then, as we enter 2020, seeing much more significant, I can see a graph here, and then a significant. We look at it in terms of grade groups. See that the majority of the decline is in the elementary level. High school and middle school stayed fairly steady during this time. We look at last year's enrollment versus the current year. Again, as I mentioned, seeing like really in kindergarten, second, and third grades, and also season down and then a decrease. Overall, 590 students down from last year. We look at the actual versus what we projected last year, and looking at the low projection enrollment, see that we're about 531 students off. So, our projection was too high in terms of. So, you know, had any of us known last fall what was going to happen in 2020? It's, as you know, it's just been a crazy year. Seeing obviously the kindergarten enrollment, you know, there are a lot of parents, not only in your division, but across the country opting out of kindergarten for this year, and you know, talked about is red shirting. So, showing, you know, those kids show up next year in kindergarten, and then kind of down the road as people are looking at other options based on happening with. Looking at it by school, you know, we see, you know, again, the biggest differences at the elementary level, and then a couple of the middle schools had, you know, high school and Hornsby and James Blair were, you know, pretty close, what we projected, but actually. Terms of the projection methodologies, we actually use a combination of the cohort survival method and a housing method. So, we look at, you know, measuring grade to grade, year to year, the number of students who move through. So, here's a number of first graders versus the number of kindergartners last year to see what that survival ratio is. If we end up with more first graders than we have in kindergarten, our survival ratio is over 100%. We use those ratios to develop projection ratios as. Additionally, looking at the housing, the number of single-family units issued each year, and evaluate trends to see the number of potential students that we see versus a single-family building. National averages, just to give you an idea, for new single-family dwelling units range between .4 and .5 per unit. So, for every hundred new single-family, we're going to see 40 and 50 new students in the district. For multifamily, it's .2 and .5 again for every hundred multifamily, about 20 to 30 per unit. So, over the years, we've provided four projection models. The most likely, which has traditionally been used for planning purposes, we have a low, moderate, and high, so getting a range of projections. Low has been traditionally used for budgeting. This year, the recommendation is to moderate for budgeting this year, just because based on where we are with COVID, our low is almost our worst-case scenario. So, with the most likely, we're seeing that pandemic is primarily under control by the end of the school year and really has little impact. Whereas with the low, we're seeing that the pandemic really continues next school year and will continue to have impact on the, and kind of the worst-case scenario. The moderate, assuming it's under reasonable control, but still has some impact on the next coming years in enrollment. And then the high, like the most likely, is, you know, kind of our best-case scenario. Terms of the low, we're actually seeing a decline of about 850 students from there to 20. Actually, there's still an increase at the kindergarten of about 100 students, and decreases at the middle of about 300, and about 400 at the high. So, again, just, you know, that impact really kind of in the elementary schools for the next years as we go, and as we get into that fifth year into projection starting this year. With the most likely projection, which has always fallen between the moderate and the high projection, we're seeing an increase of about 1,200 students from this year to 2020, with increase at the elementary of about 800, increases at the 300, and about 100 students at the high school level. With the moderate projection, we're seeing about 800 in the 10-year period. Some add about 700 at the elementary school, and a slight decline at the high school. Three 700 students at 37. For the high projection, the projected increase of 600 students overall, 900 at the middle, and 300 at the high. Here we're at for each of those four projections. So, I'm happy to take some questions. Have any?
Ms. Hummel?
Hi. Thank you for your presentation. When we're looking at housing starts, I know this has been kind of a continual question that comes up from time to time, because we are a retirement community. Sometimes we have aged, age-restricted neighborhoods, and I wondered if you could just speak to how you accommodate the age-restricted housing in your projections?
Yeah, so the age-restricted really aren't going to have any impact, you know, on the enrollment projections at all. So, we try to keep, you know, keep track of that in recognizing, and as we've seen with the development going on, we've had, you know, some of the number of housing units. Last year, there were about 279 units that we've seen issue. And, you know, really many increases. So, you know, trying to keep on the number of units, kind of what that actually for the last couple of years, it's actually not a whole lot of students.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I look forward to diving into this, and I may have more questions later. Ms. Healy, and I hope I can forward those to you as I get to study this in more detail. But I do have one question, but before I ask that, I was hoping I could ask Dr. Heron, request Dr. Heron to comment on two things relative to this study. The first is the fact that pre-K numbers are not included in this, just for the viewing public, just to clarify that. And then also, for our planning purposes, we have shifted, pivoted in the last few years to low enrollment, to low projection rather, in cooperation with our funding partners. So, if you could just talk to those two pieces before I ask my question, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We have used low enrollment for budgeting for a significant number of years. We've used low enrollment for planning for the last several years because we had a very slow growth rate. And so, when we looked at the actual, it has actually matched low enrollment for a number of years. And so, we've been using it to be very conservative in our estimate of growth and in our planning for future buildings. As Ms. Healy mentioned, tonight, we're in a very unusual situation tonight, because low, if we use low this year, one, we'll under-budget, and two, we will have students back that we won't have accounted for, and low is insinuating that we would actually go lower again than where we are now, whereas our enrollment has actually stabilized at this point in time. And the second part of your question was?
Pre-K numbers?
Pre-K. We don't include it. This analysis is done on kindergarten through 12th grade only. And because we have 395 students, pre-K students in our schools, when we start to do our own analysis, we add those numbers to this number when we're looking at capacity of buildings, because pre-K is currently served in our buildings.
Thank you. And Ms. Healy, my question is, I've read some media reports about how COVID is going to result in a baby boom, and I'm curious if that is included in your projections, or whether you, you know, I'm just thinking five years out.
Why would that be?
Yeah. No, it isn't at this point. One of the things, it's, there's just, there's so many, as you can imagine, and I know you all, you know, hear them too, there's just so many theories going on. What, at this point, we are still seeing much decline in the number of births across the country as people continue longer to have, you know, start families, and then the families are so much smaller than what we asked. So, that's kind of one thing. The other thing what I've heard specifically related to COVID is that, yes, well, you know, like when we have big snowstorms or blackouts or whatever, we have tended to see uptick births. But some of the analysts have been saying, basically, you know, what makes COVID different is that while we were on quarantine for a while, there was so many losses in jobs and the economy, so that people take necessary precautions to avoid it. That's why I said it. So, we don't really anticipate.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Dowell and then Ms. Young?
Ms. Healy, thank you for your time. Greg Dowell here. So, looking at projected enrollment for, I'm particularly interested in elementary, it doesn't really seem that your team is seeing attendance regain speed within the next 10 years.
Regaining, I'm sorry?
I guess to get back to the numbers that we were at pre-COVID, within the next 10 years, is that accurate?
Well, I mean, as we look at each of the, each of the projections shows an increase in enrollment over, at the elementary level, in your period. In terms of kindergarten, it's, you know, kind of assumed a flattening out in each of the, because we have seen a number of births over the last 15 years. For example, actually, available currently through the Department of Health. So, it was 700 between both Williamsburg and the county. Our peak year was in 2018, and last year's kindergarten, and that was at 806. Since then, it's, right? So, what we've kind of projected is a lower birth coming years as well, and just kind of a flattened out. That's kind of why kindergarten, any number in those five out years. So, that's also kind of backing that elementary. All, it's increasing.
The reason for my question is I'm looking at Future Think Report, October 2019, and it shows 5,019 elementary school students, current enrollment, 5,019. I see a sharp decline this year, and we understand why that would be. But then, it doesn't get back, it doesn't really gain traction again, attendance-wise, until 2024, 25. And not until then does it start to grow again.
Not knowing really what for next, you know, at that elementary level, you know, what I've projected for the low projection, for example, is that some of these trends that, the trend that we've seen at the elementary level this year will continue into the next year. So, as we have those lower class sizes moving through, it is going to take, you know, more time to recover. Same for really the other projections in terms of, what I looked at was really, you know, kind of discounting this year in terms of the projections ratios that I developed, but I'm still working with the lower class sizes for elementary. So, I didn't make, I didn't make assumptions that everyone who opted out this year will be back next year and then project on top of that.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Still wanted to, you know, there's really no way of knowing, or, you know,
That's a big deal.
There may be some students, even if we are back at full speed next year, that may, you know, if they've chosen a different option, maybe move that action. And there's no way to edit that methodically.
Thank you, yeah, that was, that was the crux of my question. I appreciate you getting there.
That's really, I mean, this year is just, hopefully it's an anomaly and come back, you know, next year where we work higher, but it's.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Madam Chair, my question is for Dr. Heron. Dr. Heron, all of our presentations thus far have been about return to learn for K through 12 students. Is that correct? What about our preschool population? I mean, do we have any preschools in operating, operating right now?
Yes, pre-K came back with K through three. And in fact, they are in the building four days a week out of five in-person learning.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this projection right here where it says 10,858 students for 2020, 2020 to 2021, that does not include pre-K numbers?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to clarify that for our, the, the public, that, that these numbers, yes, we are below where we were projected, but, but we do have preschool students. And, and I think you said 300 and?
Generally, it's, we have 395 slots and they're filled by the end of every year. Pre-K does start slowly with enrollment, but grows very quickly. And every year, we have filled all of the 395 slots.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Haley, I do appreciate your presentation and I'm, I'm disappointed that you didn't predict last fall that we'd have a pandemic this spring and, and.
I'm really sorry about that.
I have two, two basic questions. One, how does our, our enrollment compare to other school systems? Are they seeing similar, similar drops?
Yeah, very similar. Many of the districts that I've been working with have seen anywhere from a five to a 20%. One district, they're actually close to this, which has been a growing district of about, they have just under 20,000 students. Their kindergarten this year was down 30%. And where every year, they've just been, you know, growing like gangbusters in their, that's the worst I've heard as far as a kindergarten number. But really from around the country, what I've been hearing is really kind of 5%. And then with the larger urbans, of course, I mean, it's, there is considerably, so many are all full remote.
Sure, so, so I'd like to just kind of get, get some of your thought process and, and which, you know, so this year, we had a precipitous drop in kindergarten. So the, the question I have, what was kind of your thought process and how that would recover? So the kids that are currently in kindergarten, as they go through first, second, third grade, how do you, how did you throw a dart at the board to figure out what that was going to look like for the next five years?
What, what I looked at for the low projection is including at the survival ratios, we've talked about, you know, kind of from first to first, first to second, you know, down the line. At including this year's projection number as well as like the previous two to three years as, as kind of our worst case scenario. For the other projections, I did not include this year at all. Or as, including it in developing, this year's survival ratio for the rest of the projection. Looked at, you know, what we had, and more, and similar to, you know, the projection ratios we've used.
Okay, so, so if I, if I just follow the, so we have 670 kids in 2021 kindergarten. And so if I follow them through on your enrollment, that, that 670 turns to 705 in first grade and 735 in second grade, and then 754. But going through, they are a valley all the way through, at least until elemen, through elementary school.
Through elementary school, yeah. And as I said before, it's really because there's no way of knowing until we get to next school year, how many of the students who have opted out this year will come back.
Right, right.
And so I just, you know, while I discounted the survival ratio for the three other projections, I didn't discount the actual numbers for this. So they're all, all of the projection.
So.
The inflation for what might come in.
Got you, thank you, I appreciate that. I know it's, I know that's a challenge to figure out. I'm looking at the screen, but I think you're actually over here somewhere, so I don't, I don't know where to look. But, so the other, the other thing too, is that you're looking, are you looking at building permits issued or are you looking at housing starts when you make your projections?
At building permits issued.
Okay, because I.
What we typically see once the building permit is issued, and it's usually about 12 to 18 month time range.
Right.
When we see students coming down that to be a little more helpful in terms.
Sure.
Seeing a housing start or an occupancy.
Yeah, so one of the, and I know, I know that, you know, through time, your, your projections have been pretty much spot on coming through time, and, and you can't argue with that. And I, and I do appreciate that. The concern I have going forward is that, is that we, the James City County in particular had a large backlog of building permits which have been issued. And so there's a, there's a bubble there. And in our, in our specific instance, we now have six lanes between Richmond and Norfolk. And so I think a lot of those building permits, I'm, I don't, let me say that, I'm concerned that a lot of those building permits are going to become active and, and what that impact is going to look like on our, our actual attendance. I mean, there's, it seems like everywhere I go, I'm seeing housing units going up and I'm, I'm just concerned as to how that factors into going forward. So, but I mean, you can't argue with, with, with what we've, what we've done in the past. And this year was obviously a strange and difficult paradigm for all of us. But I'm, I'm concerned about what that looks like going forward, so it's, but it's, you know, it's, when you're, when you're doing these kind of projections, there's a lot of, a lot of variables that go into the formula, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's one of the great things, I mean, as we're doing this on an annual basis, if there is, you know, something that, you know, comes up, you know, we can address it, you know, fairly quickly. So even though for budgeting, you know, like this year was, after here inside, it was a little tricky, you know, for the planning purposes, you know, buildings and grounds and that sort of thing, will we be able to address that in the projections a little bit more readily?
Because it's just going to be interesting to see how this pandemic affects people's housing choices going forward because there had been a tendency towards multi-use, smaller spaces with more walkable areas. And then when we all got stuck inside our 800 square feet, we were kind of like, you know, that third of an acre in the, in the suburbs might not be so bad. And if you're considering that in this region, I think Williamsburg is a very attractive choice for, for that type of environment. So it's, it's, I know, I know it's hard to, hard to project that and understand that, but, you know, people, people change how they think, so. And, and then after we come out of this pandemic, three, five years, and people forget about it, maybe they go back to the multi-use and, in the walkable parks and kind of more close-knit living than where we are now. So it's just, it's just going to be interesting.
Definitely, definitely make my job a little harder.
Well, it makes all of our jobs a little harder as we try to, as we try to plan for what we're going to do.
I can only imagine for you all. It's just unbelievable.
But thank you.
Additional comments or questions for Ms. Haley? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Oh, thank you, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Where's the camera? There's cameras up there. On the tripod there.
Okay, moving on to 6.2.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're going to bring you an update on our return to learn WJCC forward and talk about metrics again, and also all our provisional planning for moving towards Path 3. As I said earlier in my announcements, we have dates in line, we have a plan, we have a vision of where we want to go, but so much depends on what the data is telling us to do over the next few weeks especially. And to start our presentation this evening, I'm going to hand over to our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Keever.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight, school administration will present data released today by the Virginia Department of Health and review with the board our projected timeline for the Division's safe and steady transition to Path 3 over the next two months. As we shared with our community last week, the School Division plans for all students to transition to a blended learning format, remote and in-person during the coming weeks. To do so safely, students return to buildings in phases. Staff continues to monitor local health data and consult with experts from the Peninsula Health Department and the Virginia Department of Education. For planning purposes, the Division released its long-term plan for a transition to Path 3. The schedule could change at any time based on health information, the number of positive COVID cases connected to an individual school, or guidance from the state or Center for Disease Control. In some cases, it may be necessary for a school or class to return to remote learning while others continue with blended or in-person learning. This is a slide that you have seen previously in our conversations. Tonight, we bring you updated information. In the top left-hand corner, you'll see the number 14, which is circled. When we last gathered on the 20th of October, that number was six. That number's gone up eight since we last got together. Additionally, we have brought back some 2,000 students over the course of that period of time as well. On the bottom right-hand side of the slide, you'll recall there are five levels of risk transmission seen here. Dark green would be the lowest level and red would be the highest level. On this next slide, we will review with you the first two indicators that are reported daily by the Health Department. Here is today's data for Williamsburg and James City County, James City County on the left and Williamsburg on the right. The numbers represent the cases and percent positive, while the color of the blocks correspond to the CDC's levels for risk transmission in schools. For comparison, when we shared this slide with you on October 20th, the new case info for JCC was 77.23 and 3% was the percent positivity. For Williamsburg, the total number of cases per 100,000 was 114 and the percent positivity was 11.1. The Division uses this data and recommendations from VDOE when deciding what path to be on and how many students should be in school. I also would like to remind you that the orange color bands range from the number 50 to the number 200. The dark green band signifies less than 3%. At the October 20 score meeting, there was some discussion around the possibility of averaging the numbers together. After further review and contact with the Health Department, school administration does not recommend averaging those numbers. It's not a practice of the Health Department. They would simply add those two numbers together and divide, and I don't think that takes into consideration the 10%, 90% split of our particular school division. We will continue to report them as separate indicators. The next slide is one that you have not necessarily seen before, and it provides information on individual metrics burden and the trend for the eastern region as of today. This information that we're showing to you is available on the VDH metric website. Of note, the case totals in the eastern region have been increasing for the last 19 days. You may be able to see that with the red highlighted or the red circle around it. So it's been increasing for 19 days, and as such, this is considered an increasing trend. Percent positivity for the eastern region has been on the rise for the last 13 days, not exceeding the 14-day threshold, so the trend is considered to be fluctuating. That said, we do anticipate seeing this move into the increasing category on day 14, which would be tomorrow. The final graphic is one that is available on the VDH CDC School Metrics site and offers a look across the Commonwealth with respect to several indicators. This particular map shows of 14-day case indices relative to new cases per 100,000 persons within a geographical area. Anywhere you see red on this map, there are over 200 cases in the last 14 days in those localities. While this graphic is not intended to scare anyone, we do want the board and community to know, as the Governor mentioned in his remarks earlier today, cases in Virginia are on the rise, and we all need to be focused on the impact this will have on our operational planning with respect to forward WJCC schools. I will also mention that when, or if, WJCC sees red for our James City County data with new cases or case positivity, there's a very strong likelihood that our plans for in-person instruction will be disrupted or delayed. Further, as we have mentioned this, and several times in communications and meetings, we need to be prepared, prepared and positioned to shift between paths and instructional delivery models as the health metrics shift across the School Division, the Peninsula, the eastern region, and of course, the Commonwealth. As a community, there are some things within our control: consistent and relentless use of the health mitigation strategies. So here again, for the fifth time, we want to show those mitigation strategies to you and call them to the attention of our viewing community. Daily system checks of, and self-assessment for wellness by staff and families before reporting to school. Use of face coverings by all staff and students. Social distancing to the greatest extent possible, and enhanced hygiene practices that include frequent hand washing. As Dr. Heron mentioned in her report, we are seeing effective implementation at elementary schools. We're happy to report that students are doing a great job of wearing their masks and washing their hands frequently. Some of our younger students need occasional reminders about keeping six feet apart, but we're continuing to work on that and will continue to work on that as we begin to welcome secondary students back. Likewise, some staff members said it was particularly challenging not to hug their students on those first few days back to school because they were so excited to see them. None of this is easy. That said, we would like to turn it over to Mr. Walker, who will update you now on plans to bring remaining elementary students back onsite for blended learning, as well as our timeline for the Division's transition to Path 3. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This next slide shows our four paths to learning that make up the forward WJCC schools' plan. Just as a reminder, Path 1 is remote learning for all students. Path 2 is limited blended learning, which includes remote and at-school for some special populations and by specific grade level. Path 3 would be blended learning for all students, K through 12. And then Path 4 would be a return to onsite learning for all students. Currently, we are firmly on Path 2 with students in kindergarten through grade 3 participating in blended learning. As a reminder, each of those students is onsite for instruction two days a week and taking part in remote learning activities at home the other three days a week. Our pre-K students are onsite four days a week for a three-hour day. Last week, school administration announced a projected timeline for the steady and safe transition to Path 3 for all students. As you can see on the screen, the return of students to buildings for blended learning is stretched over two months for Path 3. As a reminder, on Path 3, all students in grades pre-K through 12 will take part in blended learning. That includes remote and in-person learning at schools on alternating schedules with limited class size. Attendance days are determined by the student's last name. This method will allow most children to attend school in the same days as their siblings. Blended families with more than one last name should contact the school directly for Blended families with more than one last name should contact the school directly for assistance. Use of common areas, such as the cafeterias, gymnasiums, and media centers, will be limited. Bus transportation will be provided with social distancing measures in place to the greatest extent possible, and with students wearing face coverings. Meals will be served to elementary students in classrooms to limit interaction between groups of students, or at the secondary level, a grab-and-go manner for lunch. Extracurricular activities will also be limited based on the number of participants and the ability to practice social distancing. When athletic programs and competitions resume, they will be aligned with VHSL guidance and include mitigation strategies to support health and wellness. Instructional staff will continue to facilitate remote and/or onsite instruction, and employees will continue that daily self-assessment for wellness and wear face coverings in the presence of others. As additional students return to school buildings, the health situation becomes more fluid since the population and potential for exposure internally and through community spread increases. Our goal is to evaluate each unique situation and respond in a responsible manner that best supports the health and safety of the adults and children in the school building. As a result, the Division's path or schedule could change at any time based on current Health Department metrics, the number of positive COVID-19 cases division-wide, or at an individual school, or based on guidance from the VDOE or CDC. In some cases, it may be necessary for a class or school to return to remote learning, while others continue with blended or in-person learning. And that was the case recently at Mattoica Elementary. The school temporarily returned to remote learning for all students after three staff members tested positive for COVID-19 in the span of six days. According to the Virginia Department of Health, an outbreak in a school is defined as at least two confirmed cases where persons are linked by common exposure to an ill person, a setting, an event, and time period. VDH uses the national outbreak definition. While contact tracing by the Peninsula Health Department was ongoing at Mattoica, we knew that at least two lab-confirmed positive cases were connected by setting and time period. Therefore, to minimize the possibility of further spread, the decision was made to resume remote learning for 14 days. To underscore how the Division's decision-making varies based on the situation, it should be noted that earlier in that week, after one initial staff member tested positive, a single class was asked to delay its return to the school building as an appropriately measured response. And as you might imagine, a COVID-19 case will impact elementary schools differently from secondary schools. For example, if a classroom teacher at an elementary level were to become ill, he or she would potentially interact with approximately 20 to 30 students throughout the week. Dr. Worley will now come forward and share information about secondary schools and their preparations for Path 3.
The demonstration you're seeing now happens at the change of every class.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, members of the-
Question? Can we ask a question?
Not yet, they're still presenting.
Oh, okay, sorry.
In just a moment, Dr. Beers.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the Board. At the secondary level, the number is more significant because of class changes. For example, if a high school classroom teacher tests positive, the potential exposure is not only for the students in his or her class, but also the classmates and teachers of those students in each of their seven other blocks. There are also many variables that each case must be evaluated individually, and the response will depend on the unique situation. Best way to combat the spread of illness throughout our school community is for all ill people to stay home, and the next best thing we can do is to implement our mitigation strategies with fidelity at every school every day. A critical component in our mitigation strategies is the use of personal protective equipment, also known as PPE, at all of our schools. To facilitate healthy school environments, our schools have access to the following resources: cloth face coverings for every staff member, see-through face coverings for special education teachers and staff implementing support services, hand sanitizer throughout the buildings for students and staff, no-touch thermometers, disposable gloves, CDC-approved cleaner, paper towels, plexiglass barriers for offices, common areas, and teacher desks. Additionally, signs that remind everyone to wear a face covering, practice healthy hygiene habits, and keep the appropriate social distance are displayed throughout school buildings. School leadership teams are outlining specific procedures for arrival, dismissal, meals, and movement through the hallway. Signs indicating a one-way direction will assist students during class changes, and stairways will be designated appropriately for moving up and down in one direction as needed. Finally, classrooms will have the CDC-recommended cleaner and paper towels available for students to clean individual desks before leaving class, just as we demonstrated in the Board meeting this evening. This will be a routine built into the class block before each dismissal bell. Preparing for our transition to Path 3 at the secondary level requires multiple considerations. Our plan supports learning for secondary students across each level and in the Virtual Academy. Our first consideration is scheduling. Students attend multiple classes during one school day, and some of our classes are blended with students representing multiple grade levels. Secondly, our staffing considerations have a direct impact on school schedules. Currently, many teachers serve in a hybrid manner, supporting the Virtual Academy and the Pass at-home schools. Additionally, we have students serving across middle and high school levels in both our schools and in the Virtual Academy. Therefore, in order to support the needs of each school and the Virtual Academy, the daily schedule will be the same across the Board. Finally, our operational needs play a big role in the finalization of a schedule that would support learning across middle school, high school, and the Virtual Academy. The transportation of students on the same tier for middle school and high school in Path 3 is essential to support our schedules and requires utilization of the majority of our drivers to support transportation needs and social distancing on buses. To support this endeavor, we intend to send a Transportation Path 3 Needs Assessment to all secondary families. The information gathered will inform our planning process. Once our students arrive at school, we are intentional with in-person planning for students, which minimizes the opportunity for students to congregate in common areas, because as you know, it can be a challenge for hundreds of high schoolers or middle schoolers who are so excited to see each other to maintain the appropriate social distance without careful planning. The implementation of our grab-and-go lunch is a huge resource for allowing us to maximize in-person class time and support a safe and practical manner for students to have access to lunch. Also, as a part of our planning process, principals meet weekly with me and members of our leadership team, and also sometimes support staff from central office to plan each step of our journey. In fact, this practice has been in place since March of 2020, when our schools were shut down for the remainder of the school year. Throughout this process, principals share information with leadership teams and staff in their buildings to gather input and feedback for next steps. This is most commonly done through staff meetings, leadership meetings, and some principals use surveys and other technology platforms to solicit feedback. One example on the middle school level used at two of our middle schools was the creation of an internal document or an internal return-to-learn handbook for staff use. This handbook has details, processes, and procedures for transitioning to in-person learning. This planning tool is being used by Dr. Jessica Ellison at Hornsby Middle School and Tracy Jones at Tuaneau Middle School. An example from one of our high schools is the principal, Mr. Howard Townsend at Jamestown, created two teams within his building as a part of planning for return-to-learn. He has an instructional team and an operational team, with one member from each department represented on the teams. Feedback is solicited through the teams and funneled to his extended leadership team that includes curriculum leaders, the student advancement coach, school improvement specialist, his lead counselor, his athletic director, and the media specialist. Teachers, aides, custodians, and staff also had the opportunity to provide input. Similar to the process used for elementary school, our schedule for Path 3 learning divides students into blue and green groups by last name, with A through L attending onsite on Mondays and Tuesdays, and students with last names M through Z attending onsite Wednesdays and Thursdays. This method will allow the majority of children to attend school on the same days as their siblings. Blended families with more than one last name should contact their school directly for assistance with scheduling. Students will attend school in person two days a week and participate in live classes via Zoom over the other two days. Fridays will continue to be a remote learning day. To support operational needs and the ability to transport all students to school in person, our start time is adjusted by 30 minutes, with all middle and high schools and the Virtual Academy starting at 7:30. So what will our daily schedule look like? This next slide above shows the middle school schedule. Students rotate through six classes each day, beginning at 7:30 a.m. The last block ends at 12:30 with a grab-and-go lunch. Students will transition home for lunch and use the last part of their day from 1:30 to 2:30 to finalize classwork, seek additional help from teachers, and study. Each block has 45 minutes for class, with the exception of first block, which has an additional five minutes to support arrival. This next slide shows the high school schedule. Students will rotate through four blocks each day, beginning at 7:30. They will have 70 minutes per block and dismiss with a grab-and-go lunch at 12:25. Students will go home for lunch and use the end of the day to finalize class activities, complete asynchronous assignments, collaborate, or seek additional help. One important point to remember for the middle school and high school schedule is, students at the middle school level will follow the same schedule whether they're onsite, at home, via Zoom, or in the Virtual Academy. Likewise, students at the high school level will follow the same schedule whether they are onsite, home via Zoom, or at the Virtual Academy. Why is this important? First, it helps us address our transportation needs, and secondly, it will be easier for students and teachers to transition between paths for learning if, if, and when we have to move between paths due to increased COVID numbers. Regardless of the path we are on, support for students and professional development for staff will continue to be essential. For example, our next secondary professional development activity will specifically focus on support for hybrid instruction. The beauty of this PD is the instructional strategies discussed will support teaching and learning across all environments: hybrid, face-to-face, and remote. Our technology integration coaches and our content curriculum coordinators are collaborating on this professional development that teachers will participate in this month. This session will provide teachers with models for hybrid instruction and help them develop an instructional plan and materials in Canvas. Additionally, our technology integration coaches and our curriculum coordinators will provide ongoing support as teachers transition to face-to-face learning. And just as we transitioned slowly and steadily through Path 2 for elementary, we have a slow and steady plan to transition our secondary students back to the buildings on Path 3, only if and when it is safe to do so. And now, Sean, Mr. Walker, will provide some final comments.
In closing, I want to assure you that school administrators are making the best decisions they can with the information they have at any given time. We know that this situation's fluidity can be a bit frustrating at times for our families and employees, and we understand the consequences that a change in learning modality may have. The Division will give as much notice as possible in advance of a transition to assist families in navigating these challenges. Last, we look forward to our next school board meeting on the 17th, where we will share information with you about students' progress for the first marking period. Madam Chair, that concludes our report for this evening, and we're ready to assist with any questions.
Dr. Beers, did you have questions?
Yeah, I've had a number of calls, emails from a number of parents. And it brings to mind a couple of questions I wanted to ask about this, and you've actually, I think, answered one of them already. But, because I think, Dr. Worley, you said that the Virtual Academy students will follow the same schedule? Are there going to be blues and greens? You're going to do that same thing?
Yeah, Dr. Beers, they're going to follow exactly the same schedule, and it's mainly due to staffing. Dr. Worley could speak to it a little bit more length.
Right, I understand that, and that's part of my next question, is, in terms of our teachers, are all our teachers doing virtual, hybrid, and in-school instruction?
All of our teachers are not, but we do have many teachers that are doing a blend of both to meet our staffing needs at the Virtual Academy, which we have 3,000 students in, and then there are some that are doing a blend across middle and high school.
Right. How will that change when we go into Path 3? Will that change?
In Path 3, the schedule is the same at the middle school, the high school, and the Virtual Academy, so students will follow the same schedule each day, which will allow teachers to teach on that schedule, whether they're teaching a teacher, students at the Virtual Academy or at the home base. The only difference is, Dr. Beers, with the students in the Virtual Academy, is they are attending remotely from home all day, so the blue-green doesn't really apply to them because they are not coming to school in person.
Okay, and I guess my third question is, I'd like some numbers in terms of teachers and in terms of students. The ones who are just, whatever that combination might be: virtual, hybrid, or in-school? Because it's my understanding, it's quite a demanding ask for a teacher to deal with virtual and hybrid, and now I think we're also going to be talking about those same teachers, or some of those same teachers, dealing with in-school instruction. Is that correct?
So the plan for coming back to face-to-face instruction has, that's where the blue-green comes into place, so the students, half the students will be in-person, and then the other half are home on Zoom, so that's the hybrid method. The students that are remote in the Virtual Academy remain remote the entire time, they're not in-person.
And Dr. Beers, there are 3,000 of our students that opted for a totally virtual experience all year, so they will remain, well, until the first semester, they can opt out. So we have about 3,000 in that category in the Virtual Academy.
Well, all I know is, from some of the teachers that I've spoken to, that is a real challenge, in terms of time, preparation. I'm just, I'm concerned about that. And anyway, I'd like to see those, I'd like to see those numbers.
Additional questions for Dr. Worley or Mr. Walker? Ms. Cook, and then Ms. Young, and Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of the communications that we've gotten have had to do with a shift in instruction time with the change in schedule, and so could you speak to that, if instruction time will change at all for students and to what extent?
Elementary or secondary or both?
I think most of the emails we've gotten have been about secondary, yeah. Thank you.
So on the path for return to learn in-person learning across K-12, we did do a reduction in the day for all levels to help with some of the operational needs, especially that we outlined in the beginning tonight. So speaking to the ability for us to all remain on the same schedule and for transportation to be able to provide accommodations for students to get to school at both levels, but also at the secondary level, the biggest thing is the elimination of not using their large gathering spaces like cafeterias, and having the grab-and-go lunch, and adding a lot of the minutes into the class allows us to get more instructional time in before the grab-and-go lunch in the last hour of the day being asynchronous work.
So could you quantify the reduction? I mean, so I assume the reduction in instruction will then require the students do perhaps more independent learning than they have been thus far? Is that a fair statement? If you could just help us understand?
So it will be similar to the previous schedule. If you remember the previous schedule, they had, at one of the levels, they had actually a- an hour break in the middle of the day. I think at the high school level, each block has 70 minutes, at the way that we've mapped up the schedule. And the middle school, and they go to four classes a day, and then at the middle school level, they have 45 minutes in all six classes each day. So it's pretty similar to before. It is a little bit shorter, but we worked into the transportation time for lunch and then the asynchronous time at the end of the day.
A little bit shorter, but not a lot of it. Okay, thank you. And then also, another email that we got, you mentioned professional development that you're working on. Is there going to be any professional development to help teachers develop a level of comfort with the cleaning that they're going to be responsible for, if that hasn't happened already? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. At the school-based level, the principals will be leading their staffs through that. They've already talked about it, but this is the first week that all teachers are back for four days a week. And so we work in small groups, and each individual school has a plan for that. We also model that over Zoom, and so they will be working through the details of that. And the majority at the secondary level for the classroom will be the students participating in that process, and it will have to be built into the block before dismissal of each block.
Thank you. And I'm looking really forward to next week's presentation about sort of success indicators or whatever indicators we're seeing about student progress. I'm curious if you could include in that some, we talked about the demographics of the virtual academy and how much they mirror the demographics of the school, but of the school division as a whole, or at least of the school division as a whole last year. But I don't think we've talked about the demographics of the people who have stayed on the paths in the context of the large outmigration we've seen as a result of COVID. So if we could get updated demographic information on the cohort that stayed in the paths, that would be great, because I'd like to see if those, you know, students that we lost shifted that at all. And then also, I'd like to also get a sense of our, before we start serving meals again, I'd just like to get a sense of how many kids we were feeding in September of last year versus September of this year, and just get a sense of that delta. So I just want to know how many kids are not getting fed to the same extent that they were last year, and I'd like to kind of track that as we're bringing more kids into the schools, how that's improving. And then if I may, I'd just like to make a comment that, you know, we have heard from a lot of people, and the Future Think presentation sort of reminded me that over the past decade, our school division overall, not the last couple of years, but over the last decade, has really been increasing in numbers. And that's because, generally speaking, people have been really happy with what this division has done. This has been really a rock star division, very high achieving. And sort of within the context of a few months, we've shifted from a division where everybody thought we were doing amazing work to a division where most people think we're not getting it right. And, you know, Mr. Walker, you talked to that a little bit, and I think the challenge is that people in the community have wildly different ideas about what it means to get it right, and there's really no consensus about that. And so it's impossible to please everyone, and I just want to say that, you know, administrators are doing a really good job making decisions with frankly, an inadequate public health infrastructure. So thank you for doing that, and you're balancing the competing interests between physical health and social and mental well-being of all the constituencies you're responsible for. So I think you're doing that with grace, and, you know, for those of you who think we're moving too slow, I get it, I understand, but please do your part during the upcoming holidays. Don't contribute to the spread of this pandemic. Please adopt the shared norms of mask-wearing and social distancing to safeguard the future of the school division and the students that we so want to get back in the classroom. For those of you who think we're moving too fast, please know that the school division's taking this seriously, and we've demonstrated by closing schools. And so I think, just for everybody, just please be kind to one another, and we're just going to get through this together.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Hey, yeah, I just had a question. For example, because we have, I think Ms. Cook did an outstanding job talking about there is no consensus in our community about how this should be handled. I don't even think, most of us, even inside of my mind, I don't have a consensus, so. I mean, because some days I think, oh, okay, that's what we should be doing, and the next day, it could change completely. I think we're in really uncharted territory, completely. But one of the things I wanted to ask, because we do have some people that are uncomfortable about returning to the building in Path 3, has it been considered that because teachers are going to be doing instruction four days a week, and, you know, with the blue and the green, is it possible to think about for people that are uncomfortable about returning, but their students just staying, just staying at home doing four days with the virtual learning? I mean, that's just a question I had, because I have parents that, you know, they're like us, they're worried about their children. But I just was wondering if that was a possibility or if that had been thought about?
I think it's something that we have talked about. I think that our primary first consideration needs to be looking at families who are interested in exiting the virtual academy and getting into the paths, because we told them that that was an option available to them when we went through the process this summer. So we have reached out to the virtual academy families and given them the deadline of November 30th to let us know that. There are also some potential challenges with the idea of allowing students to simply remain virtual if they're not in the virtual academy, but I think that's something we'll continue to talk about as we get closer and closer to the November 30 timeframe and then into December and January.
Thank you very much. I just think the logistics of this, when I'm listening to these presentations, I think it's a nightmare. I mean, I just, I'm sorry, I'm not known for my finesse, but I do want to thank the division, and I, along with Ms. Cook, you know, as I've talked to people or as I've emailed, I said, you know, the division has its eyes daily on what's going on. It's not, oh, we'll think about it tomorrow. It's a daily discussion about what is best for students and what is best for families. But one of my other questions is, have we had any students, you know, we talked about the 14 staff members that have now presented with COVID symptoms, have we had any students that have been?
Not onsite, no ma'am.
Okay. Because I heard some research, and I'm certainly not a medical professional, saying that children aren't usually transmitters to adults, and I was wondering if you had heard that at all, or, but anyway.
There's a lot of research that's saying different things. The early research obviously did suggest that students weren't transmitting COVID-19. I think there's some later studies that suggest that they can and do to each other and to adults. I think the adults are certainly more at risk, but I do think there's been, throughout the nation, there has been an upsurge in student cases of COVID-19 as well. So I think there's a risk factor for everyone, and especially, as you saw the red map earlier in the presentation, we're very conscious and being very careful and ready to relook at the schedule we've set out at any moment in time. But I think it's important tonight, what we wanted you to understand is, this is the planning of how it will happen when it happens, and this is what we're looking at to try to avoid. For example, secondary is so much more complex than elementary, and so we want to avoid students congregating in large groups at lunchtime. Therefore, we've truncated the schedule to allow them to go home and take their lunch with them. So we're trying to look at every possible avenue, and we've certainly involved teachers in the process of that discussion as well at most of our schools.
Thank you so much. I just, I just am totally in awe of all of the effort that's being made on behalf of our division, and thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a wide variety of questions here. Jumping off from where Dr. Beers was with the 3,000 students in the virtual academy, that is K through 12, right?
Yes, sir.
So as we go back into these different paths, at least each level, if not each grade level, has a different complication, as they say. So, because as I understand, as I understand the secondary, if the three of us are in Algebra II and we're in different grade levels, I'm the freshman because I'm the youngest. And so, and so I'm not going to class, I'm not going to school because, well, actually, I guess ninth and 12th are, so Julie's not going to class because she's this junior. And so, Monday and Tuesday, Dr. Beers and I are at Lafayette High School in the classroom. Ms. Hummel is Zooming from her house.
Yes, sir.
And then, and then Monday and Tuesday, when Dr. Beers and I go home, the second half of the alphabet comes in, and they're in front, and we're Zooming in with Mrs. Hummel from our, okay. So that way, that way you still have the schedule.
Yes, sir.
And then if, and if things go bad and we all go home, we're all still on the same schedule. Whew, okay. Check, I got that. I do a little bit, but still, you know, it's, there's still just a lot of moving pieces to all of this. You know, then you get down to the middle school level, it's the same complication. I appreciate the principals getting teachers and staff engaged in the planning of this and getting their buy-in and getting their involvement, because I think, I think that's really critical, is to, as you get them involved and get their ideas on the table, to get their buy-in, and I think that's, that's very important to the success of all this, because without our teaching staff, we're in a world of hurt. And as a result of that, we talk about professional development and assessments. You know, we got to lighten our teachers' loads, and some of this professional development that may not be, all the professional development's important, but if it's not supercritical this year, I think we need to look at putting it on the shelf and just saying, we'll come back and get it next year, because...
Mr. Kelly, the only thing we're doing right now is for what we need in the moment, and some of it is by choice for teachers as well. So for example, the only thing that'll happen at secondary this month pertains to looking at how we're going to deliver, both at home and in the classroom, and some of the technology we're providing to help with that. So it really is, it has to be just in time, because we're very cognizant of the pressure that's on everyone. And honestly, I'm concerned about next week, I'm talking about progress, because that's coming from teachers as well. So what we bring next week, we have to get that information from teachers and assess how they're doing with their students in the classroom. So everything we do comes back, unfortunately, to the work of the teacher in the classroom.
You read my next line on my sheet of paper here, talking about assessments, and that that does come from the teachers, and so we're asking the teachers to do these assessments, but we're also asking the teachers to teach so that they can, and while I really want to know how our kids are doing, and I really want to know where we're failing them and where we can improve, at some point, I got to have faith in that we're doing the right things and that I don't necessarily get the solid data metrics, because that's another burden that I'm putting on my teachers, is to come up with that metric. And so, you know, whatever we can do to minimize the amount of assessment that we're asking for our teachers to do, maybe not do it for all subjects, you know, at the elementary and middle school level, but just do it for certain ones, and then have faith that it's going to the others, I think, I think we just, I think we got to take a real solid look at that. So we've talked about protocols for staff, and we've talked about protocols for classrooms. Are we giving protocols to the families so that if you're, if, you know, somebody in your household tests positive, what should the, what should the teachers and the, or what should the parents and the students be doing as a result?
I think our main communication has been mainly that is, if you're sick, stay home. That is, and every parent is supposed to check their child every morning before they send them to school. So we are acting in good faith in that as well. Even one of the things that we're giving out to every single family is a little magnet to put on their fridge with the things they need to do every single day before they come to school. I don't know if Kiefer or anybody else wants to add anything to that.
I think, I think you hit the nail on the head with that one.
So my concern is if, is if someone in the household tests positive or has active symptoms, should the student be coming to the classroom?
Oh, sir.
And so is that communicated to the parents and to the families? Because, because, you know, I've happened to read the protocol for the teachers, and if they're in a household that someone tests positive, they can't come back to school until two weeks after that person gets better and they don't have symptoms. But that's, and we could conceivably lose a teacher for a month if that occurs. I would say likely that we will lose a teacher for a month when that occurs, but what are we, what kind of guidance are we giving to our families to make sure that we're not having those types of events coming into the halls?
I'm not sure we've given direct guidance on that. I don't think so, Ms. Cox, have we? Correctly, the families, I do know, if a parent chooses not to tell us that there's someone in the family has COVID-19 and sends their student to school, we have no way of knowing, but we may be able to circle back and encourage a little bit more in that, in that area, Ms. Cox.
So it is part of our health mitigation strategies that are posted online and have been shared through our family newsletters previously. And then prior to the return of pre-K3 students, we sent a special newsletter just to those families that included links to the symptom checker and the mitigation strategies, and we'll do the same thing as each grade level returns. So next week, families of four or five grade-level students will receive that as well.
I think from what Mr. Kelly's saying, we may need to add a line that said if there's someone with COVID-19 in your immediate family, to contact the school, and then we can seek guidance from the Health Department.
And we have developed some flowchart graphic-type reminders that we can make sure that we include in our upcoming communication.
And obviously reinforcing that every so often, just to make sure that it's on the top of mind. I know that's, where I work, that's kind of, you know, if someone tests positive, there's a protocol that I have to follow in my household, and I just think that it's important that we keep that moving, moving, you know, through the school system, because that can also make things go bad. You know, not only do the teachers and the staff members bring COVID into this classroom, but students as well, and granted, we don't want that transmission. Do we know how other schools are doing? So I think there are other public schools who have opened to a greater extent than we are, and how they're doing, private schools in our area, do we know how they're doing?
I was aware of one private daycare that had to close down recently because it impacted our families, and teachers especially, who had children there for childcare. I don't know all of the other private schools. I do know systems across Virginia have been open and now are virtual again, where you're seeing the red on the screen, and it really depends on the individual division. You know, all of our learning and reading about how this works, even if there is a lot of community transmission, we can mitigate a tremendous amount through our actions in the school, but obviously, we can't control everything. And so the more we mitigate, the more we preach the same thing, we say the same things, we enforce, we create high expectations for all of those things, the more successful we will be. But can we stop everything? No.
Right, I mean, so even practicing all four of the things that we talk about in there, you know, self-assessment, hygiene, all that does is reduce risk, but there is still risk out there. And it would just be interesting to talk to some of the, to have a conversation with some of the other schools about how they're doing, and, you know, particularly in our area, how, you know, how are you doing, and are you seeing issues? And because at the end of the day, we're kind of all in this together.
Absolutely. If I could follow up just in Region 2, again, we're at different places, but most divisions are stepping back a little bit from secondary because of the complexity and the number of students, and the movement of students, and all of the things we talked about tonight. And so some had dates on the table, and they're pushing them back. I think that's their... I think that's their, Virginia Beach is discussing theirs again this week. Other smaller systems that are more remote, Bocan, Gloucester, without the same community transmission, are bringing more students in, so it really depends on your locality, your data, the processes you have in place, and how you're going about it.
Right, and, and, you know, one of the slides up there is, you know, we talked about the paths and everybody coming back by January 4th, and, and we said the path or schedule could change, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm going to go on the ledge here on my history, I don't know if it was Bradley or Patton that says, when you go to war, you have a plan, and the first thing that goes away is the plan? So, you know, we have a plan, and, and, you know, right now, if we look at the discrete data for the past two weeks, we're not in, we're not trending in a really good direction, right? So, tomorrow, we're going to, it's going to be day 14, and I don't anticipate anything different as far as our trend goes, so, you know, and I just, I just hope the community realizes that, that we are looking at this and we are making adjustments to the plan, and we have made adjustments to the plan, and that's, that's just going to, going to keep happening, I mean, and, and, you know, you know, we say most people think we're not getting it right, I mean, we hear, we hear from people on both sides who say that, but we've heard from, we haven't heard from a lot of people who know that we're doing the best we can, and that they're doing the best we can, and that we're all, we're all in this together, and we all have to do the right things to make sure we stay on the plan, so, you know, I.
If I could add as well, Mr. Kelly, and just for the public and for the board as well, I mean, we're very aware that holiday season is coming up, as Ms. Cook referenced tonight, with Thanksgiving and, and winter vacation as well, and we know that could impact our data significantly, so we're, we're very cautious, cautiously moving forward with the November 30th date and beyond, and even, you know, we'll consider, once we move towards that, do we bring in all of those grades, one after the other, or do we stagger it even further? So, everything, please know, is still on the table, but we have a goal of getting there.
Right, and, you know, we, we have the plan, we have the goal. As a community, we didn't do great on the Fourth of July, we did a little bit better on Labor Day, so, here are how we do on Halloween, but, but, you know, as we go into Thanksgiving and Christmas, we still, we have to, we have to keep those, those issues, those four things in mind, and, and make sure we're making, making appropriate plans to, to do the right thing as we go forward, because that's going to be the success not only of our schools, but of our community as well, and so, it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to, to do that. The 14 staff members, my thoughts and prayers are hoping that they're doing well, and that people are, are, are on the right path, and I would also like to, like to echo everyone else who's spoken tonight about, appreciate all the great work that the administration's doing, and as we develop the plans, and, and, you know, I just, I, I know how complicated this must be, and I, and I say I know how complicated it is, I probably don't, and there's a million other things that, that you, that you guys have to all think about, and, and, you know, we get, we get as many of them right as we can, and then we adjust when we, when we find something else, so I just want to, just let my appreciation to the, to the administration and to the teachers who are, who were on the, who are the front lines of all this, right? So, the, the amount of work and what we're asking for them to do, I, I'm just very appreciative of that, so.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Dowell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm just listening and checking off questions as I hear them asked, so I appreciate the colleagues asking these really good questions. I was really pressed to hear details about the school-based leadership teams. It was pretty quick, though, and so I wonder if you could help me recall who makes up those teams led by the principals, and does it also include elementary school? Thank you.
So, I think it's a variety by level, typically at the high school level, the main leadership team at every school would be the principal and assistant principal, but they consider their extended leadership team to be the makeup of the school improvement specialist, lots of times a lead counselor is involved, the student advancement coach, and then the curriculum leaders, which represent every department, and it's very similar at the middle school, they additionally have grade level chairs added to that mixture with their extended leadership team.
What's the mandate for them? What, what's their purpose, if you can help us understand?
Which one?
I'm sorry, the leadership team, yeah, the school-based leadership team.
Well, typically, in every school, the, the principal obviously is the instructional leader of the, the building, but the leadership team is, is, represents the voice of the building, and they seek input, so as, if you're a curriculum leader of one content area, you, you meet on a regular basis with your teachers, and you bring items or information that the, the leadership team may share, and vice versa, so there's a two-way feedback there, so that the, the leadership team hears from all the teachers in the building. But they meet weekly, and sometimes daily, to work on operational items in the building, instructional items on the building, to talk about needs lately, since March, to talk about transition plans, and how we will bring kids back to school and support teachers in virtual environments, so the list goes on and on, but it's, the, the collective team represents the voice of the school, and it, it gives the principal insight to what's going on in the building.
Thank you, that kind of gets to my next question, so it's not holistically a COVID response team, right? These are things that have already existed, but they're discussing COVID response and, and how to bring students back in the safest way possible, and really kind of being a liaison for the rest of their national peers, is that right?
Of course, elementary school looks a little different without the various departments, but we're talking about team leaders at the grade levels, specialists such as the reading coach, the math coach, principal, the assistant principal, particularly the counselor involved, it, it just depends, it's that layered approach. Grade levels meet consistently with instructional plan, bringing forth, making sure that the herd, and that they're, really the point is shared ownership, collaborative effort through the school with that shared ownership and solutions-based.
So, wouldn't it be appropriate, or would it be appropriate for, say, cafeteria workers or custodians to be a part of a team similar to this in a different realm, is that happening?
Different realm, yes.
Can you help me understand that?
They have the opportunity as well to share input within their realm of that piece, be more operation.
I could add one of the key things that the team will do at every school normally in a normal environment, is your school improvement goals, and your strategies to meet those goals, and the updates on how they're progressing, and then presenting out to us midway through the year, and then, did they accomplish their goals or not, and that's academic and some related to culture as well. So, that, that drives that process most normal, in a normal environment, it's, it's been used, obviously, for a very different purpose, as well as that right now.
Thank you, yeah. I know in the last meeting, and I think actually it was brought to our attention, two meetings back, there were something in the area of 72 students that were unaccounted for, can we get an update on that, the search and now how that's gone?
Sure, we're going to give an update on the engagements of students and the number of students not engaged in progress, to the extent that we can gather all of that data at the next meeting, that's actually the main focus for, for the next meeting.
And then probably along the same lines as I was, would be interested to know, I guess, an approximate number of retained Virtual Academy students, how many have stayed within that scope of the program, and how many have left, and I know that's kind of a on-the-spot kind of question, but I'd be interested in that.
We'll, we'll know that on the 30th of November, because that intent is being expressed right now by families, so we'll have a definitive number by grade level, elementary, secondary, and know just where we are, and that takes us, throws us into another very complex situation as we then reschedule and serve those students wherever they want to be served. It doesn't actually stop.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowell, Ms. Hummel?
Yes, thank you, and it's been great listening to everyone's questions so far. First of all, can we get a copy of the PowerPoint that you presented us, is that going to be sent to us?
I think we've put them on the website, Ms. Cox, is that correct?
It's not on Board Docs, but I didn't.
It's not on, yeah, we could certainly put it on Board Docs as well, and then we push it on our Return to Learn site after the meeting.
That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll send you a link, I'll send you a link, so everyone has it.
Okay, thanks. And we've received, all the school board members have received, a whole lot of emails, like everyone referred to, we've received a whole lot from different constituents with different opinions about things. One thing I just wanted to clarify, a couple of the emails talked about masks, and how some of the teachers felt like they weren't, they weren't sure how to guarantee with students that masks were absolutely required, and so I just wanted to double-check the policy for mask-wearing.
Well, masks are required to be in the building and to be in the classroom, there would have to be a very strong medical reason for a student not wearing a mask, and the teacher would, would be made aware of that. We have had no issues at elementary school so far, none.
Okay, so that is something that hopefully.
Been fabulous so far, obviously, we have older students coming gradually into schools, and, and we'll have to bridge each of those situations as we come across them, but we, we changed and made that a very strong commitment early on, because that is for the safety of everyone.
Great, okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I have been living and breathing the hybrid situation at my personal, at, at work, with my faculty teaching the two days on, two days off, half the, the students remote, half of them in class, and so I've, we've been doing this since August. There are some pros and cons, but just to, there are lessons learned from the people that are face-to-face in the classroom, when you're, when you've got the other half that are on Zoom, you've got to have the students with monitors and earbuds to, to cancel out all of the, the background noise and the feedback that's going on, it's almost, it's required, there's no way that the students, it's, it's a challenge for the teachers to teach, to the students that are remote, carrying on a conversation with students that are face-to-face, and the students that are remote can't hear the questions that the students that are in the classroom are asking, so there's, there's a lot of challenges to that, and so as long as, in your, your planning, you're, you're simulating, maybe working out simulations, I would recommend, because we had to, maybe you're already doing that, and maybe I should ask, is that?
Actually, we've a, we've a plan, we have some specialized equipment coming for secondary classrooms in particular, and it hasn't arrived yet, but we're hoping to get seven or eight of those ahead of time, so we actually can try it out in classrooms prior to, to going into that environment, I don't know, Dr. Worley, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, that's one of the considerations with the professional development this week, is speaking to, you know, what does this look like for classroom planning, and, and speaking to minimizing the direct instruction as we transition before the other technology comes in, good sound instruction that they can use when everybody's in the classroom, how you get a group working, and it may be that the face-to-face students may not be connected with the others, or they may be, so there's going to be flexibility in how they lay out their lesson, but absolutely, we're looking forward to other enhancements that are going to help with that, but, so thank you.
Yeah, and just the, actually having people simulate, pretending to be students, pretending to be teachers, and going through that, so that there's, you're building that level of comfort before the students get there, is just nice.
I know we have a plan to model that with the new equipment coming, and I don't know if Landers wanted to speak to it, but we are doing that, we've modeled it for our principals who are very excited about it at the secondary level, because they, we were all a little anxious at first, and I will tell you that when instructional technology modeled this equipment for us, the sigh of, oh, okay, was amongst the, the middle and high school principals that were there, were very excited about it, as well as our entire curriculum instruction department here.
Want to add anything to that? Okay.
Sorry, I, it was very difficult to hear out here, so I'm not sure if you're allowed.
Mr. Landers, I think we're talking about the functionality of the Owl, if you want to speak to it?
Yes.
Yeah, the Owl brings a couple of things to the table, one, it is a very enhanced speaker, so that the, the students at home would be able to hear not only the teacher, but also any questions that may came up in the classroom, as well as it brings the voice of the students at home into the classroom. Additionally, it is a 360-degree camera, so that the students at home, they can actually see the entire classroom, it comes with a follow-me capability, so that it will follow the teacher, should the teacher desire to not have the follow-me activated at the moment, for instance, they wanted to keep it focused on a whiteboard or something where they were working, they'll have the, the capability to do that. It brings a unique experience to try to bring those students at home into as part of the classroom. We have a number of them on order, the first seven are going to allow us to support PD, we actually received those today, that's news that Dr. Heron wasn't even aware of yet, but they just came in today, they are going to be going out in the schools as of Friday for demonstrations and to begin with PD.
Thank you.
This is one of the primary uses of some of the coronavirus relief funds, because it provides technology to the classroom for this moment in time, but something that can be used moving into the future as well.
So, the beauty of the hybrid is that, that, is the flexibility, correct? Because as we know, going forward, until probably, maybe even fall of next year, we're going to be dealing with this uncertainty, we're going to be dealing with this hybrid situation for another year, so we've got to, once we get it right, it is beautiful, because then, if you've got a student whose family gets, is exposed, that student shifts automatically, becomes, becomes remote, you've, you've got students that can come and go, it's a very fluid situation, we have found, that as long as you can maintain the social distancing, and you need to be, but that was our big, our big takeaway is to be flexible, to be flexible with the needs of the students, and also to figure out what to do, like when the, when the, this teacher gets sick, and, and then do you revert that entire class to remote only for two weeks, and then, and then that's okay, because then they can be remote for their other classes that they're in, because everyone's going to be flexible, and it's almost, it's a necessity, as we're going forward, to have that kind of hybrid flexibility, it's the only way it's going to work. So, anyway, I'm, I'm really excited that you guys are getting, using the COVID funds to, to try to get the technology and using the professional development, so best of luck on that. And then the only, I, I think along with what Mr. Dowell was saying about the leadership teams, you mentioned the work that Mr. Townsend's doing at Jamestown High School, and I'm just wondering, is that same scenario working at War Hill in Lafayette?
So, the, the principals do have the autonomy and how they lead within the building, and so some think, some are doing different scenarios, I know that all of them are using their curriculum leader and their extended staff to get their extended leadership team to talk through scenarios and to get input, as well as at the middle schools, so, and I gave an example of two of the middle schools and one of the high schools.
Okay.
They're not identical.
Mrs. Hummel, I think it's fair to say that if the teachers have not been involved in a school, then the process will not run as smoothly.
Yes, I, I would just want to say to all the parents and the teachers who have reached out to the school board, that I want to thank them for doing that, I want to thank them for taking the time to give us their feedback, give us their opinions, let us know their frustrations, it's, it's all good things for us to hear, and we're all very interested in reading what they have to say, and making sure that if they feel, for whatever reason, their voices aren't being heard, we're listening and we're forwarding to the, to Dr. Heron and the senior administration, so that no one should hopefully feel like they're, they're in a vacuum where no one's paying attention to them. So, I just wanted to say that, and I, I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers, did you have comments or questions? Ms. Young?
Yes, I do, and the question's for Mr. Landers. Mr. Landers, you know about IMAX theaters, you know?
Ah, yes, we am, familiar with them.
Okay, well, I'm one of those people that if I'm following some around, somebody around, I'm going to be very sick in a matter of seconds, I'm concerned, you said that the, the, it was called the Owl?
Yes, ma'am.
It will follow the teacher around, what if you're a student who, that is not going to work for, I mean, is there going to be some kind of thing that they can do so that they don't have to watch that, because I can tell you where I would be shortly after that.
Well, actually, since you mentioned that, when we were, when we were reviewing the Owls, we actually had one of our team members, as, as it was jumping from screen to screen, say, "Okay, I'm, you know, it's kind of bugging me a little bit here." But there are a number of options. Number one, the teacher always has control, so the teacher is able to lock those screens should one of the students start having an issue. And also on the remote end, within the Zoom session itself, the student would be able to minimize the screen if they were having any issues at that time. There, there were a couple of options to hopefully mitigate that.
Well, thank you. I just, just want you to know there are students out there that are going to be like Sandy.
Mr. Landers, if I could just say in the simulations, I want to be one of the students.
Yeah, me too.
Are there additional questions or comments?
Yeah, so you said you got seven of the units in today?
Yes, sir.
It's a few, we, we have a lot more classrooms than that, so what's your-
Well, we, we have another 295 on order. Basically, we were identifying 50 for each of the high schools, and my math's not going to work in my head, but either 30 or 40 for each of the, 30 for each of the middle schools.
And when, when are they supposed to come?
We're expecting delivery late November, early December. Apparently, they are a very hot commodity right now as pretty much all the technology items at this time.
No kidding.
No kidding. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up on two things that Mr. Kelly brought up that I thought were really important points. The first is just, you know, communication with families, you know, without getting to the point of overreach. I do, you know, I think William &amp; Mary's done a really good job of setting an expectation of behavior. And to the extent that it's possible and appropriate, if, if we could not only talk to families about when it's appropriate to send children to school or not appropriate, also just encourage them to please, in their personal time, to really follow the rules. You know, when I'm watching social media, I'm sometimes really dismayed at what I see in terms of people not socially distancing, not wearing masks, and not doing the things that we know will ultimately allow us to, to continue on the paths. So that, we do have some control over this as a community, and I hope that we exercise that control by behaving appropriately. And then also, Mr. Kelly, you talked about assessments, and I, I agree with you, I don't think we should burden teachers anymore. Their, you know, their struggle right now is sort of, they're stretched beyond anything I can comprehend right now. But I do think we have existing indicators, and that's what I'm talking about. So I did not want to, because I do think we need to really study what's going on, but I think we have enough existing indicators to really do that. And so I just want to gather existing data in terms of student engagement and that sort of thing. So I, I agree with you that adding anything else to student, to teachers' plates is not, not, not what I was asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Additional comments, questions? I just wanted to add, I think I respect the fact that in order for us to move forward, we have to move forward, and so we have that plan. But I also understand, and hope the community has, has heard clearly tonight, that, that the plan may change. And so flexibility and being like Gumby, I said that in March, so all of us will have to continue to be flexible. But building on what Ms. Hummel was, was talking about in terms of what the actual classroom looks like, I'm wondering about masks. So for the teachers who are teaching in the classrooms, but also Zooming simultaneously, is the Owl going to mitigate the mask?
Um, we actually were, we were all masked when we were evaluating the Owl, and-
Yes.
It, it, really, there was, there was hardly any noticeable. The, the speaker on the Owl is excellent.
It's phenomenal.
And we were able to understand remote end, classroom end, very well.
And then, I guess, just building on that, I'm curious if, if staff can respond to our, our students with special educational needs? Like typically, some students would be receiving push-in or push-out services. What, what does that look like? What does it look like now when they're all virtual? What does it look like when we're in the hybrid with the older grades?
I think at this point, I'll invite Ms. Bourgeois to join us from just outside the door.
That's a good question. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I think I heard the whole question regarding special education students, and, you know, just, just as in our regular, it looks like a range depending on the needs of the students. We are being able to provide services remotely. Our students that have been in school since September 4th are, are receiving those services within their classrooms. The motion looks similar to what it usually does. Those, those staff members are reporting to their schools. They are working with those students. So we have a mix. We have some students that are, are receiving things through the, you know, teletherapy model, if they're still virtual, but those that are in, in school are, are getting services. Our, our related service providers are doing what our teachers will be doing in mixture.
And so has there been any adjustment in the number of minutes of, of services as we switch from purely virtual to the hybrid? Has there been a reduction in spend minutes?
So the amendments were written so that, that the, the amount of time is proportional to the number of minutes in the day because we knew that this would change and that there would need, you know, I heard somebody say flexibility is the word right now. So the, the prior notices, all, the LRE statements all clearly indicate that they will, they'll look different depending on which path they're on, if they're paths, and that it's proportional to the length of the school day.
Thank you so much. And then one last question. I know one of the metrics that we talked about early on months ago, when we had a guest speaker from William &amp; Mary, we were talking about comfort level, particularly of our staff. And so in order for us to identify if staff were feeling comfortable, we needed to get staff in the building. And so was just wondering, has there been a touch point with our staff to see, has our comfort level increased?
I can certainly speak to elementary. I asked Mr. Walker, he was doing a, he checks in all the time with principals, and the elementary principals are very good at checking in with their staff and really getting a read on the building. And he did that again today, and I was asking about, how's it going today with the two new schools coming on? Are people ready to take the next step next week to bring fourth and fifth grade in? And, and I think elementary in particular are ready to make that happen. Their only reservation that came back from all of those conversations was about the holidays and, and concerns about that. As you're aware, secondary teachers are just in the building now, four days a week. So we're starting, the reason that's happening, and, and everyone is asking, well, why do we need to come if we don't need to be there? We need to start building that same comfort level with secondary teachers before we start bringing students back in the building. So I think it's going to take a little bit of time, and honestly, when you're in a classroom and you see it working, then you think, "I can do this." Until you experience it, there's going to be an element of fear. Some won't be fearful at all, but some will be very fearful. So I think we've just got to respect that gamut of where people are and try to, to, to move us along slowly together.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any additional thoughts or comments before we move on? Thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work and for answering all of our questions. All right, moving on to six point, oh, 7.1, superintendent's proposed FY 22 to 31 capital improvement plan.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This evening, Ms. Yuen will present my recommended capital improvement plan for fiscal year 22 through 31. The recommendation is significantly different from that brought forward by the Capital Improvement Committee. The committee makes its recommendations prior to our annual fall enrollment count on September 30th and the projections by future, of future enrollment by future think that were presented this evening. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an impact on our current enrollment at all levels, and this has led to changes in our request for instructional space over the next 10 years at both the high school and elementary levels. But first, Ms. Yuen will take us through the presentations that, that focuses mainly on fiscal year 2022. She will first provide a brief status update regarding last year's projects approved but on hold due to COVID-19. Thank you, Ms. Yuen.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Heron. Last month, I presented to you the Capital Improvement Plan Committee's recommended CIP. This evening, I will be sharing with you the superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal years 22 through 31, which you will notice has changed from the committee's recommendation based on the updated enrollment projections you saw earlier this evening. It is important to note that while we continue to be good stewards of taxpayer money, especially during the pandemic, we must plan for necessary repairs and improvements to facilities. Neglecting our buildings and failure to plan for the future could result in emergency costs or larger investments in the long run. Included at your seat is a spreadsheet showing the recommended 10-year plan for your reference. Any additions to the current adopted plan are highlighted in green if they've been added in the first five years, or highlighted in yellow if they've been added in years six through 10. Amounts highlighted in orange have been updated or moved within the plan. Before reviewing the superintendent's proposed CIP plan, I'd like to share the current status of projects that were previously approved in fiscal years 19 and 20. As you know, due to COVID-19, all projects were put on hold in the spring, and most are still on hold, including partial refurbishments at Norwich, James River, and Stonehouse, as well as the design of the War Hill Auxiliary Gym and Shelter, and the repainting and resurfacing of the Matoka Roof. The design of the Berkeley HVAC replacement and partial roof repairs are 30% complete. During last year's budget process, three projects at Norwich, the gym floor replacement, restroom update, and tile replacements were funded through balances from completed projects. These are currently on hold as well. We are currently in the process of completing the Stonehouse roof repairs, as well as the replacement of the walk-in refrigerator and freezer at Jamestown. Looking to the future now, the estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include anticipated A&E contingency and an annual escalation rate of 3% per annum. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, new state requirements or mandates, or for safety reasons. As a point of reference and for information, our funding partners adopt a five-year capital improvement plan, but funds are appropriated on an annual basis. Several years ago, the school board began developing a 10-year plan, which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan and gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, the primary focus of this presentation is on fiscal year 22. We will concentrate on the changes for fiscal year 22 from the adopted fiscal year 21 five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes in cost estimates. Earlier this evening, our 10-year enrollment projections were presented. While we have been using the low enrollment projection for many years for budgeting and planning purposes, we are using the moderate projections this evening. The reason for that is simple. We believe the current enrollment is an anomaly due to the pandemic. While we don't anticipate that it is our new normal, we acknowledge that we may not return to our previous growth immediately. This table shows future think's moderate projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. As you can see, Lafayette is currently at 85% capacity, or 1,123 students, and is projected to remain around 85% for the next 10 years. Jamestown is currently over capacity at 1,257 students, or 104%, and is projected to remain at that level through the next 10 years. War Hill's current enrollment is 1,340, or 93% capacity, and is projected to remain at that level through the next 10 years. Based on the most recent enrollment projections, it is recommended that we separate the Jamestown cafeteria expansion from the school expansion and move forward with the cafeteria space, beginning with design in fiscal year 22 and construction in fiscal year 23. This will give the school the much-needed space to accommodate their current student population. The Jamestown school expansion is proposed to move from fiscal years 24 and 25 to 27 and 28. I would like to note that a trailer was added at Jamestown this school year to assist with their space needs. Renovation of space at Lafayette is currently included in the plan in fiscal year 22 for design and in fiscal year 24 for construction, and it is recommended to move construction up to fiscal 23. These renovations will increase capacity at Lafayette and overall high school capacity by approximately 200 students. Expansion of War Hill is currently in fiscal year 23, and it is proposed to move to fiscal year 27. Design funds were allocated in fiscal year 20 for the War Hill Auxiliary Gym, and construction funds are still anticipated to be allocated in fiscal year 22.
I could just add to that, this moves two of the high school projects, construction projects, adding space outside of the five-year plan and into the long-term needs of the school division, based on the, the static nature of enrollment. But it does, when we talked to the city and county, and we, we came to the agreement that the Board of Supervisors, City Council, and School Board agreed that we would start talking about space needs overall at 85% and make a decision at 90%. We are still over 90% at the high school level for the next 10 years, but by adding 200 spaces to Lafayette High School, which is already there, it's a renovation, it's not construction, it's much less expensive, we can actually get ourselves to that 90% level and sustain that over the next 10 years, and then come back and look at it in a couple of years' time. So really trying to be conservative in moving those two major expenses right out of the next five years.
This table shows future think's moderate projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle schools. Overall, middle school capacity is currently at 81.7% and doesn't reach 85% until fiscal year 29. Based on the projected middle school enrollment for the next 10 years being on average at 82% and not yet reaching the 90% capacity overall where action needs to be taken, phase two of James Blair would be in fiscal year 32 or later. That means that the design and construction of a new central office can also be moved to fiscal years 30 and 31. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment data is available. This table shows the elementary moderate projected enrollment with pre-K added. Overall, we are currently at 89.6% capacity with two schools over 95%, Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse, both of which have trailers to assist with space needs. Trailers are not reflected in the effective capacity in this table as they are a short-term solution to address space needs. Overall, the division will be at 95% capacity in fiscal year 25 and is expected to increase each year to 101% in fiscal year 30. There's been a significant decrease in enrollment at the elementary level this year. Based on projections that we will not be back at the fiscal year 20 level until fiscal year 26, the superintendent recommends that the new elementary school be placed in fiscal year 24 for design and construction in fiscal year 25. Moderate enrollment projections with pre-K added will take us back to last year's enrollment levels in 25, 26, so if we design a new elementary school in 24 and build in 25, we will be ready for students. As for pre-K space, we continue to believe this is part of a larger community conversation about preschool education needs in our community that stretches beyond just the school division. As such, construction of additional pre-K space has been removed from the CIP until we have time to collaborate with city and county leaders on long, long-term goals and plans for preschool services in our community. As I said earlier, funding is appropriated annually for the CIP plan, and our primary focus tonight is on fiscal year 22. Proposed changes to fiscal year 22 include the following. Design of the Jamestown cafeteria expansion at an estimated cost of $221,400. Adjusting the funding request for parking lots, sidewalks, and concrete repairs to be a flat $300,000 each year. This is an increase of $160,000 for fiscal year 22. Adjusting playground funding to be a flat $100,000 each year, this is an increase of $10,000 to fiscal year 22. These total adjustments are an increase of $391,400 to fiscal year 22. Modifications to the plan not previously discussed include the following. We have removed the replacement of electrical switch gear at Laurel Lane in fiscal year 23, as this was done as part of the HVAC replacement project in fiscal year 20. Roof replacement for Stonehouse has been moved from fiscal year 28 to fiscal year 27, so it can be completed in conjunction with the HVAC replacement currently in fiscal year 26. The cost estimate has also been updated based on an estimate received earlier this Additions to the existing plan in years six through 10, or fiscal years 27 through 31, include the- include the following. Based on the current roof replacement cycles, roof replacements for DJ Montague, Blatton, and Hornsby in fiscal year 31. Based on the current HVAC replacement cycle, HVAC replacements for Blatton and Hornsby have been added with the cost split across fiscal years 30 and 31. Parking lot funding has been added in fiscal years 29 through 31 to maintain level funding of $300,000 each year, as well as playground funding in those same years to maintain level funding of $100,000 each year. New school buses are typically included when a school is built through the CIP, so you will see that we have added a request for five buses to align with the 10th elementary school request. These buses are proposed to be regular diesel buses at this time, until we have the opportunity to evaluate the usage of electric buses. We have also reviewed refurbishment projects in fiscal years 27 through 31, and split the cost of larger projects like refurbishments and HVAC replacements over two years. We provided a spreadsheet showing you the total budget by project and allocated by school. These next few slides will summarize the next five years by project type. The first area is for HVAC and window projects. This area accounts for 24% of the total five-year CIP, or $17,131,400. Roof replacements, school refurbishments, and renovation projects account for 10% of the total five-year plan, or $7,275,700. Projects grouped into the other category include items such as walk-in refrigerator, freezer replacements for cafeterias, generator replacements, electrical repairs, as well as division-wide projects such as parking, brickwork, and playground equipment. The total cost estimated over the next five years is $5,448,800, or 8%. The total cost for construction is estimated at $40,874,200, which is 58% of the five-year budget for capital improvements. This is a summary of the budget for our five-year plan, which totals $70,730,100. To highlight our major projects, fiscal year 22 contains the design for the Lafayette renovation and Jamestown cafeteria expansion, as well as construction funds for the War Hill Auxiliary Gym. Fiscal year 23 contains construction of the Lafayette renovation and Jamestown cafeteria expansion. Fiscal year 24 includes the design of the new elementary school, and fiscal year 25 includes the construction of the new elementary school. Next steps in the process include public comments on November 17 in school board discussion, followed by the school board's approval on December 8. Thank you for your consideration of this CIP recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. This is on the agenda to discuss at the next meeting, but I know folks might have some, so this is a lot to kind of take in, and we'll have more questions and more thoughts next week, but wanted to open it up now for immediate feedback. Dr. Beers?
Just a quick question. I've always been curious about this, and I see Mr. Sipes is in here. What's the criteria that we use to replace those windows? I'm thinking about the ones at Matthew Whaley, is it an age factor?
I think I'd have to call in my resident expert, I'd have to call in my resident expert, Mr. Snipes, on that one.
I saw him over there.
Right behind me.
He's wearing the nice rose-colored jacket.
There we go.
I'm just curious about that.
Window replacements are specified in the facility condition index, and so it is based on their useful life, and when they're beyond their useful life, we replace them. But we also look at work orders and how often work orders are used to replace those windows, or to repair those windows.
I just replaced all of them.
Wasn't cheap, was it?
But yeah, so not just a regular sort of cycle, or does it turn out to be sort of like that, yet do you expect them to last?
We expect them to last through the warranty, which is usually 10 years. However, if we start to get some, as you recall, a couple of years ago at Norwich, we just replaced.
That's all I just.
Ms. Young?
Mr. Snipes, I noticed that we have several roofs that are going to be repaired. What is the life expectancy of a roof?
Well, depending on the type of roof, a metal roof will last about 30 years, should last about 30 years, but as you know, weather can deteriorate things faster than what we expect. Slate roof or shingle roof is about 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm looking forward to taking this home and studying it and getting ready, and I'll send any questions I have to you, Dr. Hearn, prior to next week's meeting. But I had a couple of questions that I don't want answered now, but would like to help inform my thinking about this, and then I also had some comments I wanted to share. It occurs to me, we've been talking for a long time about this idea of variable class size based on the needs of the students, and we believe, as a nation, that those needs, those differences are probably going to be exacerbated by this pandemic. And so I'm wondering if part of this CIP, we should be considering what a right-sized class size by the demographic nature of the school would do to the effective capacity of the buildings that we have. So if you're, so what I'm saying is, if you were able to change class size to 17 on average at James River, and a higher class size at a, you know, a wealthier school, how would that change the effective capacity of our schools? In other words, the numbers that we're looking at now, because of the outmigration of students because of the pandemic, are based on last year's effective capacity, but if we took that extra space and adjusted class sizes, what would that look like? Does that, does that make sense? Am I?
Yeah, I think the overall capacity is what the building was designed for, but what you're talking about is the use of space based on staff and teacher ratio, based on free and reduced lunch and other demographics. It would look very different. If you remember from the conversation last year, James River was at about 85% capacity because the ratio was 19 to 1, and yet we considered it full. And so we were very explicit in not adding more students to that school because the ratio needed to be there to serve the students with greater needs. If we were to extrapolate across the whole system, then I think we probably would be full now. But that's, that's a big statement. We would have to look at the data and work it through. I know Mr. Walker had worked through, really thinking through at the elementary level, with different percentages, free and reduced lunch at the different schools. We have three or four over 40%, one over 70%. We have two that are, don't have a large percentage, and should we look at them through a formula of that nature first?
So that's not for our adoption of the CIP now, because the fiscal year 2020, 22, rather, which is really our focus, has, you know, no new construction at the elementary school level, but just in terms of planning, I would like to, as a school board member, better understand how executing a varied class size would impact the capacity in our elementary schools, and then if we decide to do that, how that might impact our request for space. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So if you could bring, if you could think about that, and if we could talk about that next time, or not even next time, just sometime in the next, you know, sometime. Okay, so that was my question. And then I, I wanted to just share with you all, I watched with great interest the Board of Supervisors meeting where they shared the space needs study that we had the benefit of hearing about, because of its impact on a central office space for us, because the county had included that. And so Mr. Hippel made some comments that I thought were really fascinating and really impressive, and have informed my thinking about the CIP going forward. And he started out by saying, "If you're gonna be a bear, be a grizzly," which I thought was kind of an interesting thing I'd never heard of. It turns out that's attributed to Lyndon B. Johnson, and he used to say that all the time, basically, you know, "Go big or go home," right? And so he talked about how James City County is no longer a teenager. It's moved on from being a teenager to being an adult, and now has to make longer-range plans, because doing it like a teenager is no longer a match for our community. And he talked about how we've done a good job as a community in utilizing existing public space, but we have to do better now, because we are growing, and we've grown so much in the last 15, 20 years. And he talked about how we've added space when we needed it, but we can't keep doing that. And he talked about how each time we add space to an existing building, it's at a larger cost, because especially roofs and HVAC systems aren't designed for additions. So he explicitly called out and said, "Let's stop doing that as a community. Let's stop doing it that way and get it right from the get-go. Let's build buildings and spaces and public buildings big enough so that we can grow into them." He used the Law Enforcement Center as a fine example, and I agree with him. So, you know, again, he talked about how we've done an excellent job using the space that we have, but, you know, we need to stop slapping Band-Aids on our space needs and getting them really right from the start. So I, that informs my thinking about this, and I, and I agree with him 110% on that. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cook. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lot to, lot to kind of absorb here, and I appreciate the, the presentation this evening. You know, as we, as we look out towards the needs of the school system, and it's incumbent upon us to, you know, we normally talk about a budget of need when we're talking about an operational budget, but it's also a budget of need when talking about the capital budget, and making sure that we, we plan forward for the future. Some, some, some interesting thought that was put into the high school expansions and moving those out, I thought was, is really good. You know, the, the work to be done to Lafayette, because it's, you know, it's existing space, and we're doing, and we're doing renovations there, and kind of reclaiming that for high school students, and having that in the forward years, but pushing the, the expansions of Jamestown and War Hill out, our projections show, show level enrollment there at the, at the high school level, but it's also, you know, as we're looking five, six, seven years down the road, this has kind of taught us what we can and can't do in a, in a remote and virtual environment, and how those play out going forward, particularly at the high school level, it was going to be interesting. And so pushing those out to let us kind of, kind of mature our thinking of how we deliver high school education across the board, I think is, is appropriate and, and good. The elementary school design and construction still staying inside the plan in '24, '25. It's, it's, it's interesting to have that discussion after we get our enrollment projections that show we're kind of down three-quarters of an elementary school right now. But once again, the budget of need, the, the numbers show that our, we come back up to where we were last year in the '25, '26 kind of timeframe, and I think we made a pretty compelling argument last year with our, our virtual video tour of Norwich, and, you know, the needs we have at Stonehouse, that we needed an elementary school now. And so pushing, having that elementary school in the '24, '25 to deliver in '26 kind of timeframe, gives us another year to, to kind of figure out what elementary capacity and enrollment's going to look like going forward, and allows us to kind of defer, if you will, that decision out another year. But, you know, as we look, as we look at the needs we have, particularly at the elementary, elementary level, across our division, as our, as our special ed needs are increasing, as our ELL needs are increasing, and as we as a, as a society are paying more attention to those, to Mrs. Cook's point, we might, we might need smaller sizes and smaller capacity, effective capacity's going to change based upon the needs of that school and how we address those needs. And so to push, pushing that out a year or two, I think is, I think is appropriate, still having it within the plan, so, so we can, our funding partners can, can look at the various funding, funding approaches for those schools. I think that's, I think that's the right, the right way to go, so that we can make a plan and still have, have the opportunity to, to change that decision, and maybe, maybe move it out another year, if that's, if that's what our projections show. So, so I believe that's, I believe that's also appropriate where it is in that general timeframe, too. So, so anyway, I appreciate, I appreciate the good work that was put in to develop this, and look forward to reviewing it going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Additional comments? I just want to thank Ms. Cook for sharing the words of wisdom from Mr. Hippel. I missed that Board of Supervisors meeting, but I would definitely concur with, with all of what he said, and, and then to piggyback on what Mr. Kelly and what Ms. Cook said, and harkening back to Mr. Hippel, I think we need to be proactive, right? So we already know that there's this thing called COVID Slide. It was coined that months ago, and so we know that our demographics are changing on top of COVID Slide. So I think in order for us to truly meet the future needs of our students, as Mr. Kelly just said, more, more students with special needs, more English-language learner students, more economically disadvantaged students, we have three times the number of homeless students. And then to be proactive in our response to the slide, which we're going to learn more about at our next meeting, I think it would behoove us as a division and for the school board to understand what effective capacity would look like if we were to truly meet the educational needs of our students, who are the most vulnerable by having smaller class sizes. So I definitely support those ideas. Unless there's additional comments or feedback about that, I know we can all, we'll digest this, and we'll talk more about it next week. That's just kind of a first cursory blush at that. Okay, moving on to 7.2, the school board evaluation tool. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Beers?
I had a quick question, because I, I'm always concerned about where preschool space, how it's going to be dealt with. The numbers, the projections, includes the preschool, you know, I forget where that, where that chart was that I was just looking at. No, it's back up here. It's the one where the head, that, there it is, yeah. Elementary with pre-K. Can you break those out over like the next 10 years? Is, is the pre-K growth going to continue to go up, or did they break those out?
Dr. Beers, I think our biggest challenge is we have allocated a set number of spaces based on room within a school, and so at the moment, we have 395 spaces, but usually by the end of the year, we can't accommodate all the students who need pre-K. So that's why the, the need for this wider conversation of community needs at pre-K before we add on or build a space for pre-K would be really, really important, but we can break it out about where they are now in each school, for sure.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we can do that for you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Okay, now, moving on to 7.2, the school board evaluation tool. I'm going to pump that to Ms. Hummel.
Hi, as I sent the school board evaluation tool, which comes from the VSB, it's the same evaluation tool we've used for the past, I don't know, ever since I've been on the board, and I think we've set a, a date of December 1st. So if you could just, it's a really easy evaluation form to complete, and I will collect it all, and we can review the results at the December meeting. Anyone has any questions?
There's no questions, we will move on to item 7.3, which is a proposed item, and we will act on this at the next meeting, authorization of 1.5% salary increase and a one-time bonus payment. Aaron?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I just say that as a member of the school board, I acknowledge I have an interest in this issue, and because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools, however, I believe that I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on this fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Ms. Ewing will present this item, and then I've got a few comments to make as well.
Good evening again. So this item before you is to authorize a 1.5% salary increase effective January 1st for all contracted employees, as well as a one-time $500 bonus payment for contracted employees. The total cost of the, the estimated cost for the salary increase is approximately $890,000, and for the one-time bonus payment, it's $960,000. The funding for these payments would come from the contingency funds within the fiscal year 21 budget that we had not yet allocated to a specific expenditure, and the remaining would come from salary and benefit savings from vacant positions and normal attrition savings.
I'd like to add to the conversation tonight. We've talked a lot about stress on staff, on teachers, on probably every piece of the organization over the last six months, and people have taken on incredible workload. We started in February asking for 30 more positions. We ended up with 23 less going into the We ended up with 23 less going into this year, and everyone's taken on an extra load as, as a result of that. Staff have agreed to take on alternative assignments, even at the beginning of the year, just to keep their job this year. And the work of teachers especially, and especially going to in-remote and in-person learning and the transitions between the two are creating extra stress as well. Last year, we anticipated a 3% raise, and we were excited. It was part of, part included, part of it was included in the governor's budget, and we want it to really honor our staff and give them 3% in last year's budget. All of that was lost. At the same time, we increased health insurance, and that remained in the budget, another factor to consider. There's a perfect opportunity to, to say thank you, and we value you, and we appreciate all you're doing for students, to our staff at this moment in time. We learned in our joint meeting just a short time ago that our salaries lag behind our neighbors, so we are not competitive either, which is something else to consider. And also the other thing with regard to instructional staff especially, there's going to be a huge shortage. Mr. Kelly often speaks, we, we don't really know the extent of it, but a disaster's coming if we don't keep people in our system. Even in, in our discussion earlier this evening, we're losing people. We're, we're, people are retiring because the stress is too much, because they don't want to go through this anymore. So we've got to find a way to keep and value our staff. And so it, it's my pleasure to present this to you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Mr. Dow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to share that I am enthusiastic about supporting this, this pay increase and the bonus as well. I, I do think it's timely. It's unfortunate that we weren't able to do something within our budget, but of course, due to COVID, we had, everybody had to sacrifice, and I appreciate the fact that our teachers and staff were willing to sacrifice and so many willing to stay with us and be a part of the solution going forward. Knowing that this had, not knowing that this was coming down the pike, I was just really interested to know what the numbers look like because of, you know, the, as you put it, Dr. Herron, the great stress that our teachers have been under and, and the new dynamic that they find themselves needing to, to work within and then not have been able to give them that bonus, that pay increase that we had anticipated doing back in this recent budget cycle. Looking at the numbers, 10-year average pay increase for our division was 3.67. That's a 10-year average pay increase. Rated against Newport News, 13.73, just my, my own number crunching. York County, 9.71%. State average, 13.38%. Well, WJCC well below the state average, and we hadn't been above the state average from what I've seen since 2009. And unfortunately, this doesn't really get us too competitive than the region. But I think it's, should be a good shot in the arm for our educators and our staff to show our appreciation to them, everybody that's been working so hard for our, for our, for our families. And I, I get flustered here because I'm also thinking about our custodians. I've mentioned them earlier, and we heard about them in, in our work session. Our cafeteria workers, those that really work behind the scenes, make education possible in person, and hopefully not by anybody in this room, but they often get forgotten. So I, I'm looking forward to supporting this and hopefully it being a good shot in the arm for everybody involved for our division.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Mr. Kelly and then Ms. Young.
So I noticed that there was an asterisk for contracted employees, so, so who does it not cover?
Substitutes, coaches. From contracted employees, that would be bus drivers, teacher assistants, teachers. It just doesn't cover substitutes or coaches.
Okay, so substitutes and coaches are the, are the folks who are not, who, the stipends that we give to coaches and our substitute teachers are, are not covered by the, everybody, everybody else is. And jumping off from where, where Mr. Dow was, you know, and the numbers that he, that he, that he quoted, you know, the 1.5% is, is really such a small thank you, but it's, it's, it's what we can do and what we, and what is right and what is appropriate for us to do at this point from a fiscal standpoint. And, and it's really kind of an olive branch to our staff to, that we're, we're doing everything we can. So as, as a thanks from, thanks from the community at large for all the great work that they're doing. So I'm definitely in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young?
Actually, Mr. Kelly asked my question because I wanted to know which employees would not be included in that. But that does include secretaries and I.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just say that, and also I, I'm, I'm happy that we're able to do 1.5%. I would like to see a much larger, but happy that we're able to do that considering where we came into this, this school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
I, I completely support this effort. I wish it could be more, but if nothing else, it's at least a solid gesture that we're, we really do, we really feel unbelievably grateful that we have the quality and the commitment of the teachers and also the support staff.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
Sure, I would also say, of course, I support this. I also wanted to note that there was a, I appreciate that there's a blend of the 1.5% increase and the $500 stipend or $500 bonus one time. Because I think a lot of times it, it are, it's our custodians, it's our bus drivers, it's some of the people that, that make some of the lower level salaries in our school division that are working very, very hard and long hours. And this, this shows that we're all in it together. Whether we're a teacher, a secretary, a bus driver, a custodian, wherever you are in the school system, we appreciate you and we want to value you and we want to give you a bonus check. So I just, I appreciate that this proposal includes both the 1.5 increase and the $500 bonus.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
Oh, I support this wholeheartedly. It's about probably 1/10th of what we should be doing, but I support it wholeheartedly.
Mr. Dow?
I didn't want to cut anyone else off, but I also wanted to ask what sustaining this looks like going forward and also how it's being done now.
Ewen will speak to the actual finance piece.
So it's being supported now by the contingency funds within the budget that we hadn't allocated. And then the other part will be from salary and benefit savings from natural attrition and vacant positions that are open, and so anticipated salary and benefit savings for the year.
If you remember, we, we didn't, we delayed the start of a lot of positions this year, and that allows us to do the one-time bonus, and that doesn't have to be sustained. That's a one-time just for this year. So the larger cost, we don't have to sustain next year. And then the unallocated funds, they are already in the budget. We're just allocating them now to the.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that that was clear for the listening audience.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. I'm in support of this 100%, and as I said, we will vote on this. It sounds like we're having unanimous support, and it is just a small token of appreciation for all the hard work that all of our staff across the division are doing. So unless there's additional thoughts or comments, we'll move on to policies. 8.1, revised policy KK, school visitors.
Madam Chair, Ms. Cox is going to take us through this policy this evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Herron. Tonight's school administration brings to you for consideration, recommended revisions to policy KK, school visitors. You will note that the policy was first adopted in 1974 and last revised in 1984. It is reflective of our current practice and in alignment with changes that have come over time with V SBA. It's not worded exactly as the V SBA policy is. That is based on conversations with our attorney and ensuring that it reflects our current practice, which includes visitors presenting an ID that can be scanned and used to match against a sex offender registry. We wanted to make sure that that was clearly spelled out for visitors in policy.
Ms. Kelly?
Not that this would happen or anything, but is there anything in this policy that allows us to restrict visitors in case of, I don't know, a pandemic?
So, so we talked about this a little bit in the policy review committee. This was one of the policies that was suspended temporarily and that you will note that in the policy specifically, it authorizes the superintendent to make, I have to find the exact line, I apologize.
We call them necessary actions regarding the safety order and reservation.
For safety and security, so.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I fully support safety measures and checking against databases and to keep our students and the people in our building safe. I am concerned about driver's license and other government-issued identification. I dare say that some of our parents don't have that, and so I'm concerned about our not welcoming them in our schools because of that. And so I'm, I'm concerned about having this language in that, in the policy because of that.
So there is in practice that if there is someone that does not have an identification, they can be manually entered into the system. However, in consulting with our attorney, we wanted to make clear that the expectation is that if you have an ID, you're going to present that. So it would be more on a case-by-case basis if you did not have an identification, government ID.
But my reading of this is that if you don't, then you're trespassing. And so am I reading that incorrectly? So if you're not following this?
No, ma'am. It's unauthorized persons, including suspended or expelled students. Lines 24 through 27 is people who are, if you come in without an ID, the office staff or the administrator can authorize you to be there by manually entering you into the system. So you're not an unauthorized person. You're unauthorized if, for example, you are long-term suspended and you, part of your suspension is that you can't be on school property, and you come to the school, you're a trespasser. Or if you are found, if there's a, a positive alert once an identification is scanned and you are not authorized to be on school property by law because you are a convicted sex offender of a certain level, then you would be an unauthorized person and you would be trespassing.
Yeah, okay. And I, I hear what you're saying. I just guess I don't, I don't see the, the exception reflected in here. And so if I, it doesn't sound very welcoming to me, but.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there a separate companion document or regulation that drills a little deeper?
There's not a regulation at this time for this policy.
So, so nothing actually written or stated to support what?
No. And again, the policy as written before basically said anyone could come into the building, so this is just reflective of the practice that we currently have in place.
Yeah, I guess I'd like that exception maybe, you know, I don't know. But right now, as I read it, unless I'm missing something, unless I have a government-issued, I don't see the exception that you're talking about in, in written. And so if I'm reading it to the letter of the policy, the letter of the law, I don't know that I feel that I have that latitude if I'm an employee or if I'm reading it as a potential visitor.
Do you think people really, I mean, if you're going to visit the school, okay, you are not going to look at this policy and read through it. You're going to enter the school and you're going to go through the practices, which is based on this policy. And the only situation that I could see that could be a, a problem is that if you didn't have an ID and then a, the principal or the front office desk person didn't let you become an authorized person, and then you would be looking at this policy. That, that would be the only situation where, because most people are not going to be looking at this policy before deciding to visit the school.
I don't think that the issue is that people are coming in from home and preparing themselves for a visit by looking at our policy. I think the issue is that those that are working within the school need a policy that guides them on how they welcome parents and other visitors. And if the policy doesn't say that, I think what Mrs. Cook is looking for is a companion, or I guess what I would be looking for is a companion regulation that says, all right, they don't have an ID, what's the next step? And so that was my question, is there a next step written somewhere for our educators in the buildings?
But they're supposed to follow, our employees are supposed to follow our policies, and our policy doesn't accommodate the exception you were just talking about. So that's my concern. Our practice isn't consistent with our policy.
Young wants to add something to that.
I was just going to say, it seems like you could just add authorized, authorized persons without a government ID will be dealt with on an individual basis, something as simple as that. So, I mean, if that's been the practice, that has been the practice, then just add it in there so that we are making sure that our, we are welcoming to our community.
Right, and so I can review this with the attorney. I believe that if we want to add something like that, we would have to say visitors who have not been issued a government ID, because there's a difference between not having one with you on your person and not being issued. So I'm happy to, to go back and have that reviewed again.
You know, I think the, the other issue here is, and I, it's just sort of dawned on me, is you may have all the identification in the world. That doesn't necessarily mean you're entitled to go into the school, correct? Because I have a driver's license or I have a voting card. I may know absolutely nobody in the school just wandering around and thinking, I'm going to go into the school. Not my identification, not my license. How do we stop that person from going in? Does he have, in other words, does the identification have to show that somehow you're related to a student in there or you're a grandparent or who?
No, sir, because we might have partners in education or volunteers who aren't a relative of a student. But again, if up at the very top, it's talking about coming for meetings, other school programs, or as laid out in policies related to volunteers and partners in education. And so that's a separate policy that talks about why members of our community might be in our school.
Kelly?
So following up to my question, so we, so the sentence, the school board authorized the superintendent to take all necessary actions regarding the safety order and preservation of the environment, of the educational environment. That's kind of a blank check, open statement. So, you know, when we did the, when we did the pandemic, we suspended a bunch of policies. And so should, should we put a limitation on there so that, you know, the superintendent, if a, if a superintendent says, nobody's coming to visit the schools this year, and it's not a, not a reason for, to do that, should we put some sort of limitation that in 30 days they have to come or something? I understand, I understand the immediate need, but, but there's something for, you know, so part of Dr. Beers' question, the, the schools are built with public money, so citizens have a right to go into the school to visit during normal times, you know, but so even if they just want to tour the school or whatever, they, they. so even if they just want to tour the school or whatever, and they, they make the appropriate arrangements. So if we, if we, if we, if a superintendent decides to not allow the public into the schools, shouldn't they have to come back to the school board and say at some point?
I'm presuming that this is in an emergency or disruptive or one of those kind of situations, but.
If there were an emergency at the school, for example, even if a school had to be on lockdown because of something happening in the neighborhood, we would restrict visitors coming into the building at that time. So this, this authorizes the superintendent to, to act in, in those types of situations.
I, I completely agree with that. I mean, that's totally, I totally get that. It's just that, not saying that, that our current superintendent would do that, but if we had a superintendent that said, you know, for six months, we're not going to let people into the schools, and the school board didn't necessarily agree with that decision.
I believe it's going back to regarding the safety order and preservation of an educational environment. So it's not just a blanket, she doesn't like visitors, which by the way, Dr. Heron loves visitors, please come to our schools when you can.
Yeah, so, but who determines whether that's, that, that was a necessary action regarding the safety order and preservation of the educational environment?
Well, since that would fall under daily operations of the schools, that would be in the purview of the superintendent anyway.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm, it's.
I thought this was going to be such an easy policy this evening. It's just saying, come to our schools.
And we want that. And so we don't, but I don't want the superintendent to say, you can't visit the schools this year.
And, and in fact, we have this year.
We, we are, we are very limited in our, in our visitation right now for a very specific reason.
Yeah, so, and, and you came and we, we suspended policies and this would, I'm sure would be one of those. And so what, and what, what, what tells the superintendent that they have to come to the school board to suspend policies?
Not policy KK at the moment.
So I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just concerned about the check and, the check and the balance there. And maybe I'm, my concern is overblown, but it just would seem that, are you saying yes, your concern is overblown, Mr. Kelly? Or are you?
I would never say that to you, Mr. Kelly. I'll say it.
I know you would. But I'm, I'm just, you know, just.
I do think, I do think that there has to, there has to be a reason why you want to come. I don't think you can wander around, have permission, showed my stuff, and gee, I want to, I want to observe a class. I don't know, can we, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, you're paid, you're paid for with taxpayer dollars. If you're, if I'm, if I'm somebody who wants to, as a citizen who's a, wants to come and look at this, look at a classroom, I can make an appointment with the superintendent, the principal and come and visit the classroom, or I can go look at janitor closets to see if we should have classrooms in those or.
So, Mr. Kelly, you make a very good point. When we have visitors who would like to come and observe a classroom, those are, those, those visits are made through appointment.
Definitely.
So if someone were to come to a school and say, I would just like to, to walk through the building, the, the front desk staff, front office staff would encourage them to make an appointment to do so because we don't want to disrupt the educational environment.
Dropping my mic, I'm out of here.
And that comes back to my, my question. So how is that consistent, that expectation that that's going to be the response? How is that made consistent across the many different schools?
Well, it's part of our customer service handbook and it's part of our, that we encourage people to come and make appointments that we've shared with our schools. I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's spelled out specifically in a policy.
If I could, if memory serves me correctly, I know in one of our security briefings, Mr. Weaver explained that the front office staff are the ones who do kind of vet visitors. And so that, so that is kind of in terms of safety of our buildings, is that, is that accurate? Dr. Heron, that front office staff would, you know, they ask, you know, who are you? Why are you here? What's your purpose? That, that's asked of every person who comes into a building.
Yeah, I, I've experienced it, yeah. But I'm just curious about the consistency, you know, what, where's the manual?
But is that, is that a part of our safety protocols?
It's part of our customer service. It's part of our safety. It, it goes either way depending on the situation. And this is so situational, it's hard to know what to add that would make it appropriate if, if the board is, has a consensus about adding a line to the policy, then that would be helpful moving forward with regard to access of visitors or not needing I D. or, you know, Ms. Young came up with something, is that something you would want us to add to the policy?
I think I heard that that, that that line is going to go back to legal. And so then this, this will come back to us. That's, that was what I heard. And then Mr. Kelly dropped his mic. So we're going to, with that one line, if we could reconsider, just so it's clear that there's another avenue if you don't have an issued government I D.
So I just want to be clear that you want to keep this on the agenda for action at the next meeting and just have me present that to you again with that line or without that line or?
Yes, it could be action as opposed to consent. So action, so we can talk about it one more time.
Great. I look forward to talking about this tomorrow.
I'm certain you do after this.
I guess, I'm actually pretty conservative about this. That is, I'm going to err on the side of making sure the schools are safe all the time. And if that means that it, you know, it, it's a little more difficult to get into the school, that doesn't bother me, you know? Even if a parent gets upset, there's legitimate reason for saying, these are, these are the things that we have in place because it's really important. There have been incidents all across the country where people did come in, even if they had, you know, my golly, we even knew who the person was that came in and, you know, wreaked havoc. So I'm okay with that, you know? I did, gee, I know, it's, you know, you're a little upset and well, he will talk about it or, you know, maybe all I, like, all I really need is, you need to have some kind of identification that tells me who you are. I don't, and I don't, you know, as long as it's legitimate, you know, it could be a voting card, it could be, I, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's tricky, but I, if I'm going to err, I'm going to err on that side. And I'm, I'm not going to, and we're not shutting the doors, but my golly, we spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars redoing all the front of all our buildings nicely so that they're safer. Children and staff, teachers, persons. I, the only thing, I mean, the only thing, I, maybe I missed that when we were talking about that, this is a little bit lighter, is down on page 20, on line 29. Periodically, individual school board members with the approval of the school board? I have to get the approval of the school board?
It's in the S O P.
To go in and visit a school?
It's in the S O P., so it is approved every year.
That's all. I'm just curious. Was that, was that there when we were talking about it?
Yes, sir.
Or was it? I missed that.
I don't remember that, but you, so, so what you're saying here is because it's in the S O P., the approval is implied.
Yeah, it's explicitly stated in the S O P. and adopted every year, yeah.
And we're going to, and we will follow the exact same procedure.
At employers, employees.
Everybody else has to follow.
Employees.
Mr. Kelly, if I could just point out line 14 in response to your question, I think it puts in context when the superintendent takes the action because it talks about mutual respectability and orderly conduct. And then the next line, I guess, relates to that, that the action would be taken if there was uncivil or disorderly conduct. So I think they're supposed to be tied and that gives context. And maybe it should say the superintendent or the principal.
I, I had already closed it down.
Drop the mic.
Okay, we're good.
Mr. Dowell and then Ms. Cook?
Actually, no, Dr. Beer's had my question and then I've got my answer. Thank you.
I was just going to suggest that sometimes there, you know, there's references listed at the bottom of these policies. And it sounds like, Ms. Cox, you have a lot of these details already normalized across all the schools. And so whether it's an employee handbook or safety training or whatever, you might want to reference that as, as the, the source document for how, how front office staff handle visitors, just so that it's code, you know, it's recorded as connected to that.
I believe that usually the references at the bottom are to code or to other policies.
Occasionally, we've added other ones. It's not common, but we have done it.
Okay.
And then in, you know, 2024, when we next update this policy or, or, you know.
2054?
2054, I guess I should say, yeah. The, the next school board will have a reference. Thank you.
Perfect.
Sorry about all that, just.
I would leave now.
Okay.
Thank you for your input.
We'll talk about it again next week.
Be very afraid.
All right, moving on to our action items. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions as amended?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented and amended this evening.
Is there a second? I heard a second. Any discussion? Bring down Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beerz?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Zomby?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to board member comments. Mr. Dowell?
Madam Chair, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, since we last met, we had a joint meeting, which I think you referenced and was really informative. Also, I attended the Virginia School Board Association Tidewater Regional Meeting. That was really quite informative and they're going to have in March, another meeting, a webinar where they're going to, I think, talk about diversity, equity and inclusion in schools. And then also I attended the P T A Council Meeting where Rebecca Windroot of the James City County Department of Social Services talked about trauma informed institutions and her work, the Department of Social Services work with the school division and P T As. And then the last thing, I just wanted to make a request. I would like to ask the policy committee, if my colleagues agree, to please look into how, how our division hires coaches who also are leadership of pay to play sports clubs. I know V H S L. has struggled with this and has talked about it at V S B A. meetings and maybe the Virginia School Board Association has information on that too. But based on our personnel actions tonight, I would just like us to look into that and see if there's something that we should be, you know, looking into with regard to that in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
You have absolutely nothing left to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beerz?
No, oh, oh, no, it's, it's okay. Well, we'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Beerz.
Thank you, Dr. Beerz. Mr. Kelly?
Just a lot of things we've already said, so I don't need to say a lot of that. But with tomorrow being Veterans Day, I'd just like to thank all the members of our staff and the members of the community for their service and if they fall into that category and, and appreciate, appreciate all that they've done for our community. We talked about the effort of our teachers, our staff, our administration. I, I do appreciate that. You know, having, having been here for a while and there's always lots of different opinions and we, and this, this is no different. You know, there's people who are telling us we should go faster, the people are telling us we should go slower, a lot of people who haven't said anything at all to us. You know, this, this is, this is going to, going to be a slow and patient thing and we're just going, and we're going to, you know, have to, have to have a little peace as we go through this and, and understanding as, as we get, as we get, work our way through this pandemic and, and move on to what the new normal will be. And remind the community as the holidays are coming up to follow those four guidelines that were in the presentation tonight about social distancing, face coverings, hygiene and, and self assessment and not going places if you're not feeling great. So all that, I'm, I'm done.
Dr. Beerz?
Yeah, sorry. I want to, I also want to applaud and support our superintendent administrators and, and teachers as W J C C. moves to return more students to our schools. Please respect the knowledge, expertise and good, good wisdom of our superintendent and staff in making difficult decisions about returning to the school. And also be responsible, as we've been talking about this evening, following those C D C. guidelines, social distancing. That you can do. And as I have said in the past, it's really important to be patient. I know parents and teachers and, and just the public in general are pretty frustrated with all of this, but we're all kind of in it together and we really need to be patient as we work through this incredibly difficult and challenging time. But there's no doubt in my mind that we'll be successful in doing that. Try to follow these kinds of things.
Thank you, Dr. Beerz. Ms. Hummel?
I really just want to add one thing about Veterans Day that this time last year, I had the pleasure of being at Stonehouse Elementary during their incredibly awesome Veterans Day celebration. And I know we do a lot of those kind of things at all of our schools and it's just such a wonderful thing to have experienced. And it deeply saddens me. It's like one more crummy thing about COVID that our kids aren't experiencing that and the community isn't experiencing it. So it's just, I guess I'm just looking forward to next year when I can go back to Stonehouse and maybe be able to see, see a Veterans Day celebration next year. So looking forward to the future.
I agree. As much as we want our students back in the buildings, the school board wants to be back in the buildings too, because that is definitely the highlight of, of our job is, is watching teachers and students in action and, and I'm certainly missing that. Ms. Cook and Dr. Heron mentioned the special joint meeting that we had. It was reported in the newspaper, but again, just wanted to let the community be aware of the fact that we met with our funding partners and several of our state legislators and a special presenter, Mr. Jim Regenball from Fiscal Analytics, to provide state and local funding information in light of fiscal pressures, like we've talked about tonight, the growing student population increase, student needs like special education, homeless, economically disadvantaged, English language learners. And they compared that funding with other divisions. So he provided a real high level overview, again, on state funding as it relates to local composite index, which might sound boring to some people, but as we move into budget season, I would encourage the community to go back and, and take a look at that. It's chock full of information. It is on board docs. It was a Zoom meeting and can help people understand the budgeting process and the factors that impact our schools and that process. Many of us were able to attend a, a town hall meeting that was put on by a student group, R E S A., which is the Racial Equity Student Alliance. And I, I shared with students that night, I was so impressed, I think many of us did, with the professionalism. W J C C. does a really good job and we have prepared our students to go out into this world and make change. And so it was just impressed with, with their maturity and their willingness to, to pull, pull together a pretty extensive group of movers and shakers to talk about racial equity issues. And then many of us in the community do, do know that we experience loss. So our Jamestown family and our Lafayette families have experienced a, a loss of, of students with their two student passings. And so that's heartbreaking. And I know that affects many, many of us personally know, know those students. And so our heart goes out to those families and then those, their student families as well. I'm excited about the Virginia School Board Association meeting. And so some of us are attending the early bird session, which is actually going to talk about student achievement and challenging times. And so I want the community and, and teachers to know too, that the school, school board is continuing to move forward with our professional development because we, we know that there's more challenging times coming ahead for us. And so we're eager to get some professional development and learn about ways that the board can, can support our school division. So moving on to upcoming events, we've got a 21st Century Career and Ready Advisory Committee on November 11th at 3:30 via Zoom. Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on the 12th at 6:30 via Zoom. Policy Committee is meeting on the 19th at 8:00 A M. via Zoom. And the V S B A. Annual Convention is the 18th through the 20th, virtual, with the early bird session beginning on the 16th.
18th.
The early bird session's on the 16th, oh, no, it is on the 18th. There's, I've got to go to the delegate meeting on the 16th. I'm going to. I'm going to be your delegate on the 16th. I'm doing that. And so then we have upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on the 17th. Actually, that will be adjusted. We're going to meet at, at five, beginning at 5:30. And then we spoke about public comment at 6:30 on, for the CIP, followed by a regular meeting here in the annex. And then our special joint meeting. Ms. Young?
Just going to say the 21st.
Okay, so that will be reflected. Then our, our annual joint meeting with our funding partners to talk about CIP will be via Zoom at 9:00 AM on the 4th. And then we have a closed session on the 8th at 6:00 PM here, followed by a work session at 6:30.
Madam Chair, just a request, on the 4th, we have tentative on our calendar, so if that could change, if that's confirmed, if we could get that taken care of?
It's my understanding, we all agree, all the bodies agreed to it actually a year ago.
Okay, I'm just, if we could get that updated, that'd be great.
Yep, we will do that. And then, so looking at agenda items, so for next, next week, because of the election, we're meeting next week and not in two weeks. So we'll revisit policy KK. We will have a lengthy discussion about that probably as well as CIP. And we'll have an opportunity to vote on salary and the one-time bonus. And then it's my understanding that for information, that an easement is being requested for the Grace Mill, a Grace Mill easement at James River Elementary, a temporary and a permanent easement to address some stream erosion segments. Did I get that right, Janet? That will be presented as information at the next meeting. Unless there's additional thoughts or questions, this meeting is adjourned.